All right. Good afternoon, Madam Clerk, will you take the role, please?
Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Brandau, Capriolio, Olivier, Quintero, Soria, and Baines.
Here. Today we'll have our invocation by Minister Bryson White, St. Rest Baptist Church and Community Organizing Faith in Communities. And we'll all stand for that and remain standing after our invocation because immediately following, we'll salute the flag.
Good afternoon, Council, Council President. This brief reading of Scripture and prayer comes out of the Christian faith tradition, the Book of Matthew. I'm just going to read a few, a few verses. The word says that, "Then the king will say to those at his right hand, 'Come, you that are blessed by my Father, inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the foundation of the world; for I was hungry, and you gave me food; I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink; I was a stranger, and you welcomed me; I was naked, and you gave me clothing; I was sick, and you took care of me; I was in prison, and you visited me.'" Then the righteous will answer him, "Lord, when was it that we saw you hungry and gave you food, or thirsty and gave you something to drink? And when was it that we saw you a stranger and welcomed you, or naked and gave you clothing? And when was it that we saw you sick and in prison and visited you?" And the king will answer them, "Truly, I tell you, just as you did it to one of the least of these who are members of my family, you did it to me." Let us pray. Creator God, I pray that you bring conviction to the hearts of all those in this space, each person in the audience and on the dais, to care for the least of our sisters and our brothers. Those that are homeless and are in need of shelter, those that are hungry and in need of food, those that live in areas ripe with heavy pollution and are sick because of it, those without access to things we need to flourish. Creator, move empty rhetoric from our hearts and mouths and replace it with your humility, grace, kindness, love, integrity, and a deep compassion for people. Be a guide to this city, O God, and move us away from the path that we are on and towards the path of righteousness, where the goal of our city is to see everyone made whole. God be with us this place as the leaders who are over this city make key decisions and give them grace, give them wisdom, and give them the words to comfort the afflicted. In your name we pray. Amen.
Face the flag. Ready, salute.
Fledge allegiance to the flag. One nation, under God, indivisible, and free of sin.
First up, we will have a special presentation to all the City Council members by the American Legion Writers of Post 509.
Thank you, Councilmembers, for this opportunity to speak to you today. Allow me to introduce us. This is Ralph Rocaacho, he is the Vice President of the American Legion Writers of Post 509, and I am the historian for the same organization. As you probably have noticed that during certain holidays of the year, we put American flags on the lamppost downtown. And in fact, if you walk out of the front of the building right now, you'll see quite a few flags that we have put up there. In recent weeks, we had a desire to purchase new flags and, working closely with Gregory of Councilmember Baines' office, each of the council members donated some money for this cause, and we are very appreciative of that. And we want to give you a certificate today. Let me just read you what the certificate says. Operation Flag Fresno, Certificate of Appreciation, presented to Councilmember Oliver Baines. In appreciation of your generous donation to the American Legion Writers of Post 509 for Operation Flag Fresno, your support honoring our flag and our veterans demonstrates your patriotism and sets a positive example for other civic leaders and the public. Presented, signed by Anthony Burrow, President of the American Legion Writers of Post 509. Some of you may wonder what Operation Flag Fresno was all about, so I'm going to briefly just tell you what it's all about. In 2008, several of us approached the mayor, and eventually, we got permission to place the flags on the lamppost downtown. The original plan was for two phases. The first was the downtown area, and the second was to put flags on Blackstone from Olive Avenue all the way out to River Park. Unfortunately, if you all recall at that period of time, the city suffered from some financial difficulties, and they were not able to put the brackets on the lamppost, which was a requirement because we were not allowed to do such a thing. In any event, the whole plan came to a halt. It appears now, in talking to Claudia Reese and some other members of the mayor's staff, that we can now go ahead and get Phase Two of this started. So what I'm asking today is, is that some of this information, or some things may come before you again, and I'm hoping that you will support Operation Flag Fresno, because it's just the right thing to do to show our patriotism to our country and our veterans. So at this time, we'd like to give you these certificates.
And I'm going to ask the council members to come down front and receive our plaques. Very, very rarely, we do a lot of the recognizing in this chamber, but this is the first time, I think, we get recognized, so I'm going to ask us to come down now. And, and, and listen, I just, I had all of us come down. We don't normally do this together, but very few times are we, are we recognized as a body. We are deeply, deeply humbled and appreciative of the fact that you all would give us this recognition. So we wanted to come down in person and tell you thank you, shake your hand, and make sure that we receive, receive this gift from you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Olivier?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you want to.
Councilmember Lee Brand?
How are you going to do with Capriolio? I want to hear that.
Excuse me?
How are you going to do with Capriolio? I want to hear that.
Councilmember Quintero?
Thank you, Blackhoff. I appreciate it.
This one's yours?
Oh, thank you.
Member Baines?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, is that pronounced, Soria?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Soria?
That's right.
And Councilmember Brandau?
Hey, thank you much. It's beautiful.
Thanks, Ralph. And Capriolio?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, here, go ahead. Just add something. The 509 is one of the true jewels in District Four, which is my district, and I'm so happy that you're there and so happy that you give back to our community the way you do. So you guys are wonderful, and it's a real honor to receive this from you. Thank you.
Thank you, and good day.
Thank you all very much. Hey, guys, if you could come down here so we can take a photo with you guys? Gentlemen, before, before you leave, gentlemen, Frank, I wanted to make you guys aware, Claudia Reese also mentioned this project to, to the Assistant City Manager and myself. You tell us today, you tell us what time, and I will tell you, all of our directors and possibly all of our assistant directors will join you on that Saturday morning, whenever you want to do, to start putting these flags up on Blackstone. So you've got at least 15 to 20 volunteers right now, if not more. And I'm sure I can probably convince another six or seven to join me as well. All right. Next up, we have a resolution of commendation for the Central High students' participation in 2015 National Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge in New York City, presented by Councilmember Soria.
And then also Superintendent Mark Sutton, Principal Robert Perez, and then teacher, Erin? So today, I am very proud to recognize two local young entrepreneurs, Patrick Rogers and Faith Savala, who attend high school in District One, out in Central Unified, which is west of the 99. So these two Central High students are business partners of the Faith-Based Clothing 413 Supply Company. They launched their clothing line to spread a positive message of hope and empowerment to young people. Last month, in October, the duo with their teacher traveled to New York City to participate in the 2015 National Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. They made us proud by representing Fresno and Central Unified School District at this During the competition, both Patrick and Faith were chosen to co-star in the event's welcome video, and they brought to that today to share with us. So right now, both Patrick and Faith will share a little bit about their experience while in New York, and can tell us a little bit about their clothing line.
Hello again. My name is Patrick Rogers. I'm a 15-year-old young entrepreneur. This company was started in around February of 2015. I'm sorry. I created this, I'm the founder. I wanted to spread hope and empowerment to other young people who wanted to create an idea, who could help the environment or this nation, you know? Yeah, this company has went a long way since then, and I'm very proud.
My name is Faith. I'm also a young entrepreneur. I'm 16 years old. I'm a junior at Central East High School. And Patrick actually started off the clothing line on his own, and we were in the same business class together, and it was just for a project. And I joined him with the project, and we ended up taking it farther than I thought that it was going to go. And he made me the brand ambassador of the clothing line. And I make music, and I have my own little fan base in Fresno. I was also on the local radio station, it's a hip-hop radio station, it's called B-95. And I have my, my own fans and stuff. And so Patrick told me, you know, can you wear the clothing line for me and, you know, give it some promotion? And so I did, and we ended up partnering up, and I learned more about business and entrepreneurship. And we were really going for the same goal, to spread positivity and to reach out to our youth and spark the faith back up in our generation. And that was basically our goal, is to spread positivity.
Yeah. In New York, we also, we competed against college students, which is very good for us, since we're only in high school. And many of them had training for around, it could go up to like three years with a whole team, and they had like partners and professionals help them with skills. And me and Faith, we basically got our own help from our teacher and then our principal, without as much help as they got, so we're very proud of that. I'm not sure if she mentioned this, but we're in the top 18,000 students out of the nation for that, in the top 40,000 in achievement, too. Yeah.
In New York City, just getting there was such an amazing accomplishment, and it really opened up both of our eyes to see that there's so much in life that you can achieve and you can strive for. And I can really say that the whole business competition really motivated me to do better, whether it came to education or anything else, just to really strive for what I want. And the pizza was really amazing in New York.
I just want to reiterate that when they competed originally for this competition, it was last school year, and Patrick was a freshman, Faith was a sophomore, and they were competing in the Fresno area versus basically seniors. So when they actually won the trip to New York this school year, they were competing against college freshmen. In fact, the girl that won the competition is from Los Angeles, and she's a freshman at UC Irvine. And if you notice the slideshow itself, this was me taking pictures behind the scenes of these guys that were starring in a video, and the video is actually about to play right now. This was shown at the competition finals. It would be great if we had music.
Again, very proud to recognize two very young entrepreneurs, and I want to thank both the principal and the teacher for supporting them, along with our superintendent. I also want to recognize, I know their parents are here, so if we can have you guys stand, thank you for supporting your children to be entrepreneurs in this world. We know that here in the city of Fresno, they can make a difference in really providing future economic opportunities for other young people and motivating them. So it's very encouraging to see what they are doing at such a young age, and so I'm proud today to be able to recognize them with the resolution. If we can have the clerk read for the record.
Whereas, on October 6, 2015, Central High School students Patrick Rogers and Faith Savala took their company, 413 Supply Co., to the 2015 National Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge in New York City, and represented Fresno in the Central Unified School District. And whereas, CEO Patrick Rogers and brand ambassador Faith Savala are business partners in the Faith-Based Clothing Line 413 Supply Co., specializing in powerful, cutting-edge products and services to spread a message of hope and empowerment to today's youth. And whereas, Patrick Rogers is an ambitious young entrepreneur with a passion and vision for creativity, and Faith Savala is a natural-born leader with determination to pave her way through the music industry, the business partners share a common goal, to show people that there is hope and to never stop believing in themselves. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the city of Fresno does hereby recognize Patrick Rogers and Faith Savala for successfully representing Fresno and the Central Unified School District at the 2015 National Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge, and we encourage the continued success of 413 Supply Co.
And before, I would like to see if the principal or the superintendent want to share a couple of words.
I just wanted to say thank you to the City Council members for recognizing our students. A lot of times, we don't get a chance to see and tell the stories of what our kids do and the great things that they do. So hopefully, this is just the beginning of us being able to come here and share the wonderful things that are happening in Central Unified. Thank you.
I, too, want to thank for the recognition, and as a principal, it makes me very proud that, just supporting young, energetic, innovative minds, getting them prepared for college community and career. So it makes me very proud to be here, and I want to give them a special thanks.
We'll now have the proclamation of Stanley L. McDivitt by Councilmember Brand.
Stan, come on up. We're here today to honor Stan McDivitt, 34 years, and I've known this guy since, what, 1960, 69, Air National Guard, many, many, a lifetime ago, huh? I'm going to tell you, everybody knows a lot of bad stories about financial disasters in the city of Fresno, but let me tell you an overwhelming story of success. In 1990s, the city of Fresno, engineered by Stan McDivitt, did a pension obligation bond for a couple hundred million dollars. That was the absolute perfect timing. It took off the same time the stock market was rolling, and for about a period of seven, eight years, we're paying around five or six percent for an interest rate, earned about 17, 18 percent on our return. And the difference of the arbitrage, the spread between that was $300 million, the city earned in surplus earnings. Thank you, Stan McDivitt. Unfortunately, we spent the money. But Stan went on in his tenure, on the, most of the time on the Retirement Board, and up to a couple of years ago, we had about an eight-and-a-half percent return on investment, one of the highest yields of any pension fund in the United States, and again, another job well done, Stan McDivitt. The city of Fresno is one of the few cities in the United States that has a fully funded pension fund, and I can say without reservation that the success of our pension fund was the difference between Fresno filing for bankruptcy, and again, a final thank you, Stan McDivitt. Todd, going to read the proclamation?
Whereas, Stanley L. McDivitt is commended for his 34-year commitment and dedication to the city of Fresno, and whereas, Stanley L. McDivitt is a certified public accountant and past certified California municipal treasurer, and whereas, in addition to the responsibilities of the retirement system, Stanley L. McDivitt managed the city's treasury, accounting, and audit divisions. Whereas, treasury manager for the city of Fresno, Mr. McDivitt structured and issued over 40 bonds financing, financing in excess of $1 billion, and managed the city's internal investment pool of $300 million. And whereas, in 1994, after a voter-approved charter amendment creating the retirement administrator position, Stanley L. McDivitt was appointed by the city of Fresno retirement boards as the system's first official retirement administrator. And whereas, Stanley L. McDivitt was the individual responsible for the structuring and issuance of a $245 million pension obligation bond financing for the city of Fresno, and as a result, the city of Fresno was the first city in the state of California to issue pension obligation bonds. And whereas, for the past 16 years, the city of Fresno retirement system's comprehensive annual financing reports have received the prestigious National Certificate of Achievement Award, recognizing excellence in financial reporting. And whereas, under the direction of Stanley L. McDivitt, the system's assets have grown from approximately $300 million to the current level of $2.5 billion. And whereas, for the past 20-plus years, the retirement systems have virtually been the highest-funded public pension systems in California, and two of the top systems in the nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council, do hereby proclaim November 19, 2015, to be Stanley L. McDivitt Day in the city of Fresno.
Stan, want to say a few words?
I would love to. Well, it's, it's been a long time, 34 years in management at one place is quite a long time. But, you know, I've been a very blessed man in my life. You know, I have a family. Second family, sitting right there. That's the retirement office in the second, third row there, and my whole staff is here. I have the retirement boards here, including one sitting up above us. I have friends here. I have two guys in the back I've golfed with 30 years. That's friendship, man, that's 30 years. I've got other friends down here in the front. It's, it's quite a, quite an experience, and, you know, there's a lot of achievement in doing things because what I have done have helped everyone. I have 6,000 members in our pension system. We have active retirees, we have surviving spouses, and they've all benefited from the work that we have done. And I say "we" because I can take credit for this, but you don't do it alone. I do it with the staff, I do it with the boards. I mean, it's a team effort. We have consultants, we have managers. I orchestrate a lot of that, and it's important to get it done, but it's truly a great feeling to, to come to the end of a long career. On the positive side, I really look forward to my next adventure. It's not retirement, it's just a new adventure, and we're going to have fun and do things. My family, that I've probably stressed out over the years, will probably enjoy me a little bit more when I'm not working so hard. But it's, you know, it's a serious thing. I brought some props with me today. I think you'll enjoy this. This has been hanging in my golf workshop for 21 years, since my dad passed away, and it was given to him, this is a certificate to James McDivitt. He's hereby appointed honorary mayor, so I'm not the first McDivitt to be acknowledged by the city council. It was given November 6, 1961. Okay, my father was in World War II, and he was in the Air Force, and he was very active in the Air Force Association. So he was involved in the early 60s, bringing the Gathering of the Warbirds to Fresno. So I assume this was the acknowledgement, he was also president of the Mobile Home Park Association during that same period of time. But that's when we moved to Fresno, 1955. Six years later, he's been acknowledged by the council, so he didn't live here all his life. He came here from Kansas City, you know, he's one of our immigrants from Kansas City. But I'm very proud of what he did and what he accomplished in his life, and to be acknowledged. What I'd like to share with you is, you know, I grew up here, I came down to Fulton Mall with my mother, we shopped. This is the only place you could go, maybe the Tower District, we banked in the Tower District. I grew up, Fresno is my home. It's probably going to stay my home, but it's really, really important. I look back in the 60s, and I see a convention center, I see the Fulton Mall, I see a lot of excitement for what was a very small community. When I, my family moved here, there were about 45,000 people in Fresno, and I've seen it grow to what it is, and I'm very proud of it. So I'm proud of what I've done, what I've accomplished, and I'm proud of our city. And I thank you very much.
Before you, Stan, before you, before you sit down, Stan, I know Councilmember Quintero has a couple of remarks you'd like to make.
Stan, I got to know you a few years before I came on council. I was working with Councilmember Lung, and as you recall, we, that's the way I got to know you, and the more we talked, the more I realized that I knew you a little bit better than, than I realized through your, your wife and her family, her, her parents. But I want to, I want to thank you, and I know that a lot of our city employees maybe don't realize it yet, but one of the, the things that you did that, that really had a tremendous impact on, on our employees was, at the, at that time, shortly after I came on the council, was, was to explain to the council and help them realize the importance of, of having a drop program with the, with the city, and, and you made it very simple for the council to understand in terms of the impact that it was going to have on, on the employment, the quality of employees that we would get as well for, for having that. So if there's a four-letter word for you, I call you Mr. Drop.
Careful what you say there.
And I want to, I want to thank you for that. I really want to thank you. I really want to thank you, and I know a lot of employees maybe didn't realize how much you had to do with that, so I want to thank you for helping me and helping the council understand the importance of having that, so.
Available for guest appearances.
I know that. I believe it.
I was talking to a friend of mine the other day, and he was talking about wanting to go to the coast for some wine and food show in April, and I'm looking at my calendar and thinking I'm gonna be available, and it hit me, about two text messages, then I'm available every day in April. I mean, it's something, it's a real change in life to think like that, because.
Does that mean free advice as well, or?
Sure, give me a call.
Okay, guys, you heard that, the board heard that. Thank you, Stan, thank you again.
And finally, Stan, I'd just like to add that while all the council members and the mayor signed the proclamation, for us on the council, privately, we know how Lee feels about you. We know that this was a, we know that you guys have a bromance, you and Lee, and so finally, it's been memorialized for the whole of Fresno to see, so congratulations on your retirement, Stan, and Lee's definitely gonna miss you, so.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along, we'll now go to the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to?
Council President?
Okay.
Yeah, all the November minutes will come back December 3rd for approval.
All right, we will lay over the amendments. Minnesota, now we'll move to the councilman reports and comments. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to close today's meeting in memory of Robert Duncan, Mr. Bulldog, and he was known as Mr. Bulldog, not only for his tremendous support of Fresno State and Fresno State Athletics, but also for the city of Fresno, and quite frankly, back in the day, Duncan Ceramics kind of put Fresno on the map, and it's, he was president for over thirty years, so I'd like to close today's meeting in memory of Mr. Robert Duncan. Also, on Saturday, I had the honor and pleasure of being at the Vii Hospital. They had, they opened the Walk of Honor honoring all veterans in the Fresno area of the Central Valley, and it was, it was quite an event, and this wall will continue to expand, in fact, I hope to have my father and my brother's names added to that wall. It honors, right now, over 1,085 veterans, and including more than forty that were killed in action. So if you have a chance, we have our own version of the wall here in Fresno, not just Vietnam, but all wars that our local citizens participated in and made some ultimate sacrifices. So I'd encourage you all to go out there to the Vii Hospital at Fresno and Shields and look this over, it's outside, it's really a beautiful, beautiful memorial. Also, I wanted to congratulate Aetna Insurance. They received a part of 3.7 million dollars in state credits, tax credits, from GoBiz, and thanks to these credits, we'll have 225 more jobs at Aetna, which is at about Sixth and Shaw in my district, so it's really, really exciting to have more employment for our community, more jobs for everybody in Fresno, so that's 225 more jobs. And I know my colleagues want to talk a little bit about Inspiration Park, that was a great event, and thank you for having me there. Also, at OK Produce, they're opening up their new facility, they've been a four-generation produce distributor here in Fresno, and this is a great facility, and they bring a lot of money to our community, and congratulations to the Matorian family on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Soria.
So just to piggyback on my council colleague's comments regarding the grand opening and ribbon-cutting of Inspirational Park, I know I've been talking about it, I believe, the last few meetings, but excited to say that the park was officially opened. I do want to thank a number of people, I first want to thank my colleagues, Councilmembers Brandow and Capriolio for being there and sharing that moment, and also everyone that made it possible. So first, I'll start off with RICV, the Boys and Girls Club, for really taking initiative to partner in the operation of the park. They're the ones that are gonna be operating the park going forward, as well as everything that they did to coordinate with us to make it a very festive day. I want to thank the city of Fresno Parks Department for working with our office and also the mayor's office. Thank you for being there, it was a great event. We even had former councilmember Blongeong there, who we know was very instrumental, as well as other people that worked very hard to make sure that this park was a reality. I also want to thank Fresno Police Officers Association and the firefighters for volunteering to cook. I think they served about 800 hamburgers and hot dogs, so it was very exciting because we had, I believe, about 1,200 people there that day, so it was very exciting to see the children's faces and the parents being so excited to have this space that is very, that was very needed in the community, so I want to thank everyone for making it a successful event. I also want to just thank our public work staff, the director Scott Mosher and Aaron, Staff Aaron, because we had a community meeting to update our residents on the Venice Boulevard trees and the median, and so I want to thank them for all the work that they're doing. I know that Renee, you were also there, so thank you for making sure that things are being implemented in terms of the drip irrigation. I know that the residents were very excited, we had a great turnout and good input from the community, so I want to thank, thank all of you for really making sure that this median island, which is in a very historic area of the city, remains, and remains beautiful, and that the trees that were planted also, thank you for doing that work. I also want to thank the city of Fresno staff for helping us with, specifically, shout out to Sam Laird, Facilities Manager, because we did host, I believe it was Tuesday night, we celebrated November as Prematurity Awareness Month, and so, and specifically, we partnered with First Five Fresno County to do a walk and acknowledge World Prematurity Day, and so want to thank the staff, specifically, like I said, Sam Laird, for allowing us to light up City Hall purple. It was, it looked very beautiful that Tuesday night, if you had a chance to see it, or you can go to my Facebook and see pictures, but I want to thank you guys for helping us coordinate that. And then the last thing that I just want to share that I'm excited about, the Self-Help Credit Union, I sit on the Board of CDFI along with my council colleague Oliver Baines, they're having their official grant opening today. This credit union, I just came from a lunch with the CEO, will provide an alternative form of banking for many of our communities in need, especially in the southwest area, so very excited. I know that also councilmember Quintero was part of CDFI Board, which worked really hard to get this credit union in place, an alternative to payday lenders in our community, so that is very exciting, and the grand opening is this evening at 5:00 PM.
Councilmember Brandow.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to start off by talking about Inspiration Park. I also went out to the grand opening, as Councilmember Soria had talked about, and it was fantastic. That is, that is, that is a jewel in the city of Fresno, I'll tell you. The playground alone is just amazing, so, and then to think that everything there is designed so that people with physical needs can go enjoy the things that most of us can do at any park, and so I thought that was fantastic, and I can't remember if it was Councilmember Soria or somebody talked about, so in my mind, I was thinking about a lot of kids that could access this playground equipment, but in reality, the thought, and somebody might have mentioned it, that adults that have been wounded or veterans or something like that, now they can take their grandkids, their kids, out to this park, and they can interact with their grandkids because they can play on the equipment with them. This is, you know, something a lot of the rest of us take for granted, it was very fantastic. I'm glad that you mentioned our former colleague Blongeong, he was a huge part of that. We took several votes at council to make sure that that park took place, and I was, it was a very proud day for the city of Fresno. Councilmember Soria just said to me, as we sat down, she goes, "Oh, I just now noticed your flag's out right here." And last year in January, I went over to the Valley Novelty, and I bought this little French flag, I already had the American flag, and that was after, after that was after massacre in France because somebody drew a cartoon. And so I had put it away in storage and didn't know that I was ever gonna need it again, but after what happened last week in France, I thought I need to bring this back out, and I know that France stood with us when we were attacked on 9/11, and it's, you know, just being a representative of a city, I think, you know, what is that city going through, and what are the people in that city going through? So I wanted to bring this back out today and recognize our commitment to our friends and allies and people around the world that suffer those type of tragedies, so thank you very much, Council President.
Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to make a comment for the, regarding the 530 agenda item, regarding the discussion and presentations that we're gonna have on the Development Code, that just wanted to notify you that I won't be here for the meeting, but I will read the transcript, and wanted to ask the city attorney a question. We, our office and Gilbert Felix from Councilmember Soria's office has been meeting with the mobile vendors, and we've been working with them to try and get them in a real good position to where they want to be able to, I guess, in their minds, to legitimize more the businesses that they have, and also the ability to come out and pay their taxes, and just clarification on a lot of the sales that they have, and those meetings have been real good, and what we're looking at, city attorney, is to put some of those, some of those checks and balances in the Development Code as we move there with them, because we have been meeting with them, attorneys from your office, Finance Department have been meeting, and we've kept the city manager's office abreast of all that, and the question is, in wanting to put those into the new Development Code, you know, those checks and balances that, for the mobile vendors, will we still have time to do that, or when will we be able to do that?
Well, there would be several options. Either the administration could offer that up in addition to what's being, before the council today. Remember, today is the introduction of the matter, and it is planned that on December 3rd, that would be the final adoption. So if there's another change offered on December 3rd, and it's a substantial change, which I think this would be, that would require that to be treated as the introduction and then adoption the week after that. Or another council member could make your motion for you today. I think those would be our options. Or, I understand that there may be a process planned of returning later with some cleanup-type items like we did after the general plan, too, there might be an option for that.
Okay, well, once, we're gonna have one more, I believe, one more follow-up meeting with the vendors group and the different offices within the city, and by then, we should have everything clarified and using the language that we want to include on there, and working with your office and keeping the city manager's office abreast, you know, that way we're all on the same page, and we'll work with Gilbert from Councilmember Soria's office on putting all that together. So I just wanted to let the council know that that will be forthcoming, then there won't be any surprises at the last minute, but it, I think it'll really be helpful for the vendors.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, appreciate it.
You're welcome, Mr. President. All right, we'll now move to the approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
There's two changes, both under Section C, City Council.
Three?
Three, City Council.
Section three?
Yes, Section three. The first one is CA, which is a resolution encouraging Congress and the President of the United States to pass comprehensive immigration reform.
And that's?
That's being removed.
And that's 3A?
3A.
Right.
And the next one is 3C, as in Charlie, and that's a bill for introduction adding Article 4.15 to Chapter 12 of the Fresno Municipal Code relating to the exemption of development impact fees and the replacement or reconstruction of existing commercial structures.
Okay. Those are the only changes?
Yes, those are the only changes I have, they're both being removed.
Councilmember Soria.
One thing that I would like to table, Item 3B, I'd like to table that item until the Development Code becomes effective.
City Attorney, can we table that item until?
There are two options here, either a council member can ask that be removed from this agenda, and then there would have to be a motion to keep it on, or the council member could make a positive motion that it not return until a certain time, and that would take a separate motion with four votes to approve that.
I would like to make a motion to be able to table Item 3B until the Development Code becomes effective.
Okay.
If there's a second, then we need to act on that motion first.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table Item 3B due now. Do I vote on that before I approve the final, I vote on that before approval?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on that. So what we're doing, counsel, just so you guys know, Councilmember Soria is asking that we table Item 3B until the, 3B, until the full Development Code is implemented. So I have a motion and a second. Councilmember Olivier.
So can there be discussion about it?
Yeah.
I'm curious, why?
I would like to wait until we have had, we've finished with the whole Development Code, and in addition to, I haven't seen a staff report on this specific item, and so I would like additional time to be able to vet the situation.
All right, see no further comment. Councilmember Brandow.
Okay, Councilmember Soria, then you want to postpone this item until the Development Code has been implemented, is that correct? That appears to be on or about February 3rd, then can we convene the item at the council date immediately after the full adoption of the Development Code?
You want to do a date certain?
Well, that's what.
Calendar yet.
So what we can do then, we can amend the motion to have this item come back the week after the meeting following the implementation of the Development Code?
The effective date of the Development Code.
Is that what you're looking for, Councilmember?
I just wanted clarification, it's my item, and I'd love to vote on it today, but I did want clarification, so I'm not gonna support delaying it, I don't see it's as connected to the Development Code or the passage of the Development Code, so.
So Councilmember Soria, did you want to amend your motion to that, to have it come back, the meeting following the implement, the effective date of the Development Code?
That's fine.
Okay. Is a second?
Did you push back up? Okay. I'm just curious to the maker of the motion, just out of curiosity, is there, is there, where's the linkage in the two documents that causes you, because I would like to hear it today, just out of curiosity?
Well, I'd like additional time, so if we can call for the question, Council President?
All right, Councilmember Brand.
I just want to clarify, so this is being continued to February 3rd, or?
To the meeting, no, we're not gonna do a date certain, we'll do a meeting certain, and it will be, should the motion pass, it will be continued till the meeting following the effective implementation of the Development.
Which would be sometime in February.
Which would be theoretically sometime in February.
I think, I also agree this, I don't believe they're related, so I'll probably not support the motion, thank you.
Okay, and just, I'll offer my couple of comments. I don't, I certainly don't mind with the delay, I think there were some things in there that were asked of the county, maybe that will allow some time to have some discussions, maybe with our county counterparts, to see if what we're asking them to do is feasible from their end as well. So we'll go ahead and vote, we'll vote electronically. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, all those against, vote no. Motion passes, Councilmembers Brandow, Olivier, and Brand voting no. So we'll remove that from the agenda. So now I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda, the amended agenda. We have a motion by Councilmember Capriolio, a second by Councilmember Soria. All those in favor? All opposed? All right. All right, item passes 7-0. We'll now move on. We're going to take our, we have a 2 o'clock scheduled hearing that we'll take right now, and then we'll come back to do the balance of the agenda. So, I know staff's been waiting patiently.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. This is a public hearing. We have a request from Edison Plaza Partners to vacate Gary Street near Edison High School and also two alleys adjacent to Gary Street, and that is Gary Street between Walnut and Plumas. They're asking for this vacation so that they can build an affordable housing project that will be within the area where the streets are being proposed for vacation. We've received no comments or concerns about this vacation. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? See none? I'll bring it back to the dais. And it's in my district, so I'll just, I'll just mention that this has been a, probably a five-year project in the making at least. So, I'm happy to see that we are well on our way to construction. The Edison Two Partnership is a group of folks we know, we know very well. So, I'll be happy to make the motion to approve staff's recommendation. All right, see no further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0. We'll now move to our consent calendar. Do I have any Councilmembers that would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? All right, see none? I'll take the consent calendar out to the public. Do I have any members of the public wishing to comment on the consent calendar? See none? I'll bring it back to the dais. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? And I'll second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. We'll now move on to Item 2A, which is award a construction contract in the amount of $158,766,000 to WM Lyles Company for the City of Fresno's 80 million gallon per day southeast water treatment facility. Do you have staff?
Very happy to be here to do that. Good afternoon, Council. Glenn Knapp, Professional Engineer, Water Division. The agenda item before you is for Council approval of a construction contract to WM Lyles for construction of the city's southeast surface water treatment plant facility. WM Lyles Company was determined by staff to be the lowest responsive and responsible pre-qualified bidder at a contract amount of $158,766,000, which was 0.8% below the engineer's estimate of $160 million. Construction costs for this project will be funded through a state revolving fund low-interest loan previously approved by Council at an interest rate of 1.667% over a 30-year term, resulting in a ratepayer savings of approximately $115 million over the term of the loan, as compared to conventional bonded debt with private institutions typically at or near 5.5%. The notice to proceed for construction is anticipated to be issued mid-December of this year, with completion estimated in December of 2018. Myself and DPU staff are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, see none? I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brand.
I want to thank Tommy Esquera for bringing probably the biggest piece of the Water Capital Program, the surface water treatment plant, under budget. This is something that, you know, in the past, has been an issue on some of our major projects, and I'm hoping that the Oversight Board will be in assistance to you guys along the way. That Councilmember Soria will be representing the Council on. I think it's a good start, and hopefully, we'll have enough water here that when that thing is built, that we can start storing water and start avoiding, you know, the problems we had in the past. Again, I want to thank you for the first step in the right direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Brandal.
I'm making motion to approve the item.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Brand, Brand, second, by Councilmember Brandal. Councilmember Brandal.
Tommy, can I ask you a question, please? Just point of clarification, thanks for meeting with me. I think it was yesterday or two days ago.
They're running all, they're all running together, yes.
Development Code thing, right. So, thank you for keeping me informed again. I mean, this is a vote that we've been working on as a council. This is, you know, a project we've been working on for several years now. So, did I get it correct in our meeting that so far, this project proposed is under budget?
Right. We would, planned it at 160 within the 100, so the rate plan you approved in February was 186 million revenue for the whole program related to the plant. We had put into there 160 million for the plant, just for the plant-specific, and this, this bid got us off on a good start. We are under that budget, so we are a million.
Keep it up, Tommy.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Capriolio.
I would join in the comments by my colleagues, and the interest rate information was exceptional. That's just really a great deal and well done to get us into that position. And like my colleague, Councilmember Brandal, we're, of the tripartite, we have one thing done, we're under budget. Now, we need to be on time and get that high level of quality that Fresno is known for. So, I think we're going to be, going to be fine with this whole thing. So, please keep up the good work, keep us posted, and happy to support this.
Councilmember Soria.
I also want to thank Tommy for coming to visit me and giving me an update, and it was very thorough. I also want to just echo some of the comments made by my council colleague, Steve, in regards to this, to really coming under budget, so that's very good news. And I do look forward to working with you as we get our oversight committee. I believe there's still two of my council colleagues that need to appoint, so if you haven't appointed yet, please get those appointments in as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, those are all the Councilmembers punched up. I'll just add my same sentiment and echo. It's good to be under budget. Very rarely do we hear that in government, so that's a great, that's a good job, and certainly, I'm proud as well to support this. So, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0. All right, we'll now move on to Item 2B, which is the approval, the Fourth Amendment to the Professional Engineering Consulting Services Agreement with Corolo Engineers in the amount of $8,897,052 to provide construction phase and general construction contract administration services.
Great. Thank you, Council, and thank you again for the previous agenda item. I just wanted to point out that that was a, it's been a huge team effort on that one. It took a lot, a lot of staff energy and time, and we got some good professional support. So, good to see you keep it moving forward, and again, we got off on the right foot with coming in under the number we had anticipated. This agenda item is related to the construction phase services. We need a professional to help us do that. So, this will be Amendment Number Four to Corolo's contract. In 2013, they had been hired through a competitive selection process to do a five-part project with the city. The parts were, four of the parts were related to design. That is complete through bidding, and the contract, as it was written, indicated that the construction phase services would start with the notice of award, which was the item we just did. The original contract value was $9.91 million, and we have, came in under budget on the design effort at 9.9, at 9.4 million, so it left us 500,000, $550,000 left. The level of effort that we've negotiated to get the construction done is 9.4 million. We had the savings from the design effort, and so we are requesting an amendment in the amount of $8,897,052 to bring this baby under budget, on time, and in high quality. And with that, we're prepared to take any questions.
All right, we'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? See none? I'll bring it back to the dais. I have a motion from Councilmember Soria. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilmember Brand. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you, staff. We'll now move on to Item 2C, the actions pertaining to the recycled water transmission main Southwest Quadrant Project SW1B. Staff?
Say that four times fast.
I won't.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I'm Kevin Norgard, Department of Public Utilities, Wastewater Management Division. First, I need to read something into the record. Under the local preference in the staff report, the last two sentences should be replaced with "local preference" was not implemented for this, for the professional services contracts, but the lowest proposer, BSK, is a local business. So, wastewater is asking approval of four action items for the recycled water wastewater, recycled water Southwest Quadrant Project Southwest 1B located District 3 in the county. The first action is to approve an AAR for $19,348,700. The second action is to award a construction contract in the amount of $9,341,491 to garni construction of Livermore, California. The third and fourth action items are to award two special inspection contracts for Southwest 1A and 1B in the amount of $174,519 and $189,960, respectively, to BSK Associates. This project is the second section of recycled water pipeline to go into this, to move water from the wastewater plant into town. It's five miles long, and it starts at Corneille and Whitesbridge and ends at Marks and Belmont. That main trunk line size is 48 to 36-inch in diameter, and then there's a spur that goes down Blythe from Belmont to near Nielsen for, we're hit picking up a cemetery there, and it's a 10-inch sewer, or 10-inch transmission main. The AAR is for $19 million, and the reason we're doing that is our SRF loan was approved, the 1% loan was approved in October, so those documents have come through, and we're now funding, or we're now appropriating money out of the SRF account. That SRF loan will ultimately be $50 million for all of those Southwest projects. So, I'll be available if we have any, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. We'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, see none? I'll bring it back to the dais. Council, what is your pleasure? I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you. We'll now move on to Item 2D, which is 21st Amendment to the Annual to the AAR to appropriate $5,081,900 for operating programs in Public Works. Staff?
Good afternoon, Council. Scott Mosier, Public Works Director. This item is one that typically comes before the Council in the fall, commonly known as a re-budget. There are no new projects within this agenda item. These are projects all previously approved by the Council, and each fall, we have to look and see which dollars did not get spent in the prior fiscal year that are now necessary in order to complete these. This represents $5 million. Our total capital program is around $100 million a year, so it represents about 5% of that total that we're here, staff requesting the Council to basically re-appropriate those dollars this fiscal year in order that the projects may be completed. So, within the item, there's no general fund. These are primarily grant-specific dollars, and we would recommend approval in order that we can complete these council-approved projects. Staff's available with any questions. Thank you.
All right, I'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, see none? I'll bring it back to the dais. Do I have a motion for approval? I'll second it. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Brand absent. We'll now move on to Item 2E, authorize the fire chief or designate to execute a contract with Pinnacle Training Systems for the annual wellness, fitness, and physicals program.
Good afternoon, Council President. Council. Ted Simonius, Deputy Chief, Fresno Fire Department. We're recommending that Council authorize fire chief or designate to execute a contract with Pinnacle Training Systems in the amount not to exceed $135,000 to provide comprehensive annual physical fitness checks and wellness reviews for all sworn safety members of the department. I'm around for any questions you might have.
Right, we'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? See, see none? I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Capriolio.
Would that number be the true number, or do we have an estimate of a lower number than 135 for the service?
I believe that's the true number. We went out RFP, and that's the number that came back from the company we selected.
Very good, thank you.
Councilmember Soria.
I also have a question, maybe Bruce, you could answer. Did we already budget for this in the budget, or where is this coming from in terms of funds?
We're using dollars that the Fire Department's being reimbursed for wildfire responses from the state of California. These dollars were not budgeted this year, so that's why there's an AAR appropriations resolution. In our subsequent budget years, you will see this coming in as a revenue, but for this purpose, that's how we're funding this program.
And so, the cost will be the same, or it will be more because?
It's a multi, I believe, there's, it's a multi-year deal, and?
It's a multi-year deal. It'll be, the cost will be the same each year. The, the number this year coming out of the reimbursement from state mutual aid assistance hasn't, we won't hit the top yet until after fire season's completely done and we get through the rest of the year. But at this point in time, we've, we've been out a lot this year, so there'll be a significant amount of money there.
So, do you guys anticipate for future that we would be using the same source?
Yes. And if I could, I'll expand on, we've looked at the last three or four years and looked at what the, on average, annualized value of that revenue is. So, in our subsequent years, you will see us then making that same kind of revenue assumption based on the last three to five years of reimbursements.
Current revenues will cover the total cost.
Yes, so, from an ongoing basis, and I want to point, this is, this is, this program is looking to kind of give a full evaluation of the overall physical condition of the fire, our firefighters, and providing them with some personal one-on-one recommendations, but also allows us to get a better handle on some things that we need to do from training, preventive care, exercise routines, things like that, even diet, so that we can identify potentially some things prior to them occurring, whether it's an on-the-job injury, or in some cases cardiovascular, or other illnesses that, as our firefighters, as we all age, we're a little bit more susceptible to that stuff, and some of this stuff, unless we go through a full-blown comprehensive physical, not like what we are provided under our city's health and welfare, there is the possibility that our employees could be walking around with a cardiovascular disease that they're not taking care of and need to. So, we're trying to try to prevent some future costs by making the investment upfront.
And we used to do that, correct?
Absolutely. We, in the past, had done that prior to the recession. We'd done full-blown physicals for all of the firefighters. However, we hadn't, the department as a whole didn't get an aggregate report back on the health of our department. This program allows a report to come back to the fire chief so that we can evaluate where we need to meet and adjust what we're doing.
I'll make a motion.
All right, I'll second.
And I'd just like to add, you stay seated, that I think this is a good thing. I think that anytime we can make sure that our staff is healthy, especially with the physical requirements and stress that they're under, that we should be doing what we can to do that. So, I'm absolutely supportive, supportive in that. I think the, while the dollar amount isn't negligible, I think that potentially, the long-term costs will more than compensate for this if we have healthy firefighters. So, happy to second your motion, Councilmember Soria.
All those in favor? All opposed?
No.
Okay, well, let's take an electronic vote. So, all those in favor push yes, all those opposed push no. Item passes 4 to 3 with Councilmembers Brandal, Olivier, and Brand voting no. Thank you, staff. All right, we will now move on to our closed session. City Attorney, can you make a announcement, please?
Yes. In closed session, we have existing litigation in the case entitled Romero versus Rodriguez in the City of Fresno.
All right, thank you. And after closed session, we will be in adjournment until, I'm sorry, recess until our scheduled hearing at 5:00.
hearing at 5:30. Thank you. 5:30. Our hearing is at 5:30. We're moving to closed session now, and then after we leave out a closed session, we will be, all of those items are removed. So, all right.
Council President, we're not adjourning then for Mr. Robert Duncan. That would be this evening.
Right, exactly. And we're gonna, we're gonna reconvene our meeting and take our 5:30 hearing. Prior to doing that, we are going to have some unscheduled communication, so if I can have Sheila Anderson come forth, and you'll have three minutes, state your name and address Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Good evening, I'm Sheila Anderson. I'm from Fresno, California. I am the daughter of the late Pastor Calvin and the late Lula Anderson here of Fresno, and I'm a graduate of Edison High School. Go Tigers, sideline. I am here today because I live in our family home, and, which is located by Gaskin Elementary on Cavillan Street, which was a very proud working-class area, growing up as a child, where homeownership was valued. Therefore, I'm here today to request that the City of Fresno untable and enforce the law regarding trash bins in view on the side of the house, not in the street, in the side of the home. Within the last 30 days, the neighbors, including myself, has contacted code enforcement to assist in cleaning up our area from junk on the side of our homes and parking on the lawns, and they have been very effective, and I've seen a change quickly within that 30 days. The only thing that is missing right now that is left is to enforce the law regarding trash bins in view, which is prevalent everywhere here in Fresno, but particularly on the west Fresno, the west side. And in my opinion, it is devaluing our city, our beautiful city, that is. It's teaching our youth in the area to be lazy, and the future residents, which there is fencing, where you can put your trash bins behind the fencing. It is also unhealthy. It smells, it attracts bugs and rodents, and even though the trash bins are picked up weekly, it's still unhealthy. I am proposing today that the city create a budget to hire one person or a few to take calls or to have the same department, which already takes similar calls. You can call regarding the tire on the side of the home, you should be able to call regarding the trash bins on the side of the home. It's very unattractive and it's bringing down our value. And I'm looking forward to the law being enforced, that no trash bins in view on the side of the home, because we are proud homeowners, and it beautifies our city, and it's a simple fix. And I'm requesting that you put it on the law, put this law on the agenda as an action item, and so we can make this happen and Fresno, keep Fresno looking good, and train up our young people that, to respect homeownerships, respect beautifying your home, the aesthetics of your home, to make our city look good. Thank you.
All right, if I can have Doug Rickert come, no, thank you. If I can have Doug Rickert come, and if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Doug Rickert. I'm a member of councilmember Brandal's District 2, and, see you guys. I'm here to talk about the Fulton Mall. I know what you're thinking, oh my God, here's the big goofy guy with glasses coming up to talk about the Fulton Mall. How am I gonna stay awake for three minutes here? Well, let's talk about money. You have it, the mayor wants it. The numbers are in on the Fulton Mall bid, and they don't add up. The current, the current project has started out and crept in cost and cost and cost. The mayor promised $20 million. The low bid was 23 and change, and, you know, we got a couple councilmembers there. If they're not paying attention, then it's not worth my time. I'm sorry.
Mr. Rickert, please finish your dialogue. I was, I enjoyed it, and it's, it's got some great information in there, too.
I'll cut to the chasing, because ironically, my main point is about the conditions that were added to the bill last February. If you remember, the councilmembers added the conditions that were suggested by councilmember Brand over there, and there were several conditions that had to be met before approval of the contract, and they have not been met. Condition one, the lowest complete bid came in after unknown staff adjustment at $22.4 million, which fails the condition not to exceed $20 million. The, number two, the state grants listed in the council conditions do not exist in the Tiger Grant Agreement with the DOT. The stated funding amounts do not cover the lowest competitive bid. In condition three, there still are legal challenges going on. Condition four, the administration has failed to meet numerous stated deadlines and cause into question any fiscal inflationary estimates based on delays. Number five, the additive alternatives in the original bid failed to keep the bids within the estimated total. It is questionable if these alternatives met the letter, if not the spirit, of the council conditions of the stated Plan B proposal. In question, number six, any estimates of maintenance costs from the administration are suspect. If the administration currently has difficulty maintaining the mall, where will the maintenance money be found in the future? Why is it not currently being used currently? Now, I don't expect you guys to believe me, hook, line, and sinker. Do the research yourself. It's in the, the biggest damning piece of evidence is in the Tiger Grant Agreement letter that the city signed with the feds that says, no state funding, $3.8 million in local funding. Another issue as we end is one of the alternatives was parking meters, so to make the bid come in under, they're gonna cut the parking meters, but we all know you're gonna need meters, so that's gonna be a city expense that's kind of a wraparound. The mayor's kind of doing a wraparound to get the city to spend money outside the bid. Thank you.
Mr. Rickert, why don't you break that down into like a brief, a legal brief, or some sort of brief, and give us the facts as you perceive them, and we can incorporate that in our analysis.
Absolutely. We, downtown Fresno Coalition dropped off some information today, but I'll include the breakdown of the additive alternates and the funding from the Tiger Grant Agreement letter. You know, it's very hard to say no to free money, but this really isn't free money if you have to come up with $2 to $5 million additional, and then after that, depending upon what gets cut out to bring the bid down, the city's gonna have to pay for later.
The sooner you get that to us, the better.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rickert. Thank you. All right, we are now gonna move into our 5:30 hearing. It's a continued hearing to consider text amendment application number TA-15-001, which essentially is adopting the citywide development code. We received public comment last, our last meeting, which was last week. We closed public hearing, and today, we will, the council will deliberate and potentially begin the process of adopting a code this evening. So, just by, for way of process, so everyone knows how we're gonna do, what we're gonna do tonight. In a few moments, our planning director will offer a few comments to set the stage for the, the staff recommendation tonight. Councilmembers will be allowed to make new amendments. So, the very first items we will deal with will be new amendments by councilmembers for the development code. We will put those amendments in what we are all familiar with, the proverbial hopper, and then we will go through and we will debate each one of the amendments and see which ones make it into the final development code or not. So, just to be clear, after staff's presentation, we will accept amendments for the development code, and then we will come back and deliberate them individually and vote on them individually. All right, Jennifer, floor's yours.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, Jennifer Clark, Director of Development and Resource Management. Before you today is an ordinance bill, the associated environmental findings and resolutions that culminate many years of work, debate, discussion, and review of the development standards in Fresno. This work has included technical advisory committees, public workshops, public review drafts, and technical workshops for several years, most intensively beginning in March of this year. The staff recommendation was provided at your workshop last week and can be found in your packet, which includes revisions in Exhibit D as updated based on public comment. In addition to the revisions in Exhibit D, at this time, the city attorney would like to raise an additional issue regarding medical marijuana.
Council President? Yes, on medical marijuana. Our existing zoning code essentially states that medical marijuana dispensaries and cooperatives are allowed where medical offices are allowed, but only if consistent with state and federal law. As we know, it's still illegal under federal law. Under the new development code, it has a list essentially of what is allowed, and then it says if it's not on that list, you can't do it. We believe it would increase our ability to enforce the medical marijuana dispensary laws if we had a specific provision. So, we're recommending that the existing code sections concerning medical marijuana dispensaries be plugged into the new development code also, and it would take a motion to do that at this point.
Let me make sure I understand that, City Attorney. Are we saying that we are unable to enforce the medical marijuana laws now based on...
What we're saying is that we believe it'd be easier to enforce it if you take the existing provisions in our zoning code and plug that into the new development code, too.
So that we can enforce the medical medicinal marijuana laws?
Yes.
Okay, are we unable to do that?
We could theoretically, but I think it would be much easier if we have the precise language as opposed to the list, and then this simply isn't on the list.
Okay.
Because this is a matter of going to court, getting an injunction, having contempt, authority to enforce it, and so forth, and I think it would help if it were more clear.
Okay, so if a councilmember would like to make that motion, we'll certainly entertain it at the time we take motions.
Thank you. And staff has nothing further to add at this point. The long-range planning team and I are here to answer any questions, and this concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Brand.
I'd like to introduce an amendment to our existing amendments. There should be a handout. Does everybody have one of these? That highlights changes in yellow?
Right.
Okay, and I'll give one to the city clerk in a minute. So, this basically clarifies the, by some really minor wordage, like adding a word here, a word there, on the, on a few items that were part of the amendments we have before us correctly. Okay, so that's, let me, okay, let me, let me read it properly. It says, adopt the staff recommendations as printed in Agenda ID number 15-1032, accepting Sections 15-1004E, 15-1005, 15-1104F, and 15-1105, and incorporating additional revisions made by staff encumbered in Exhibit D. And again, it's outlined in this exhibit here, that'll be part of the record. Also, this will include a directing staff to bring back a revised zoning map within 30 days of the effective date of this ordinance. Number four, directing staff to solicit additional input from multifamily developers and architects and bring back final recommendations for Sections 15-1004E, 15-1005, 15-1104F, and 15-1105 within 30 days. In other words, we're simply taking the section that provides the guidelines for facade development on multifamily units to be, come back within 30 days to the council to be reviewed and approved as part of the overall development code. Also, and I'll rediscuss the record because you don't have a copy, and I'll give you a copy later, under Section 16-6102E3, this is regarding processing entitlements, once the concept plan is received by the city, the development may proceed if no general plan amendments are required. Okay, and I'll provide a written one on that. And finally, last but not least, this is a file, read into the record, and this is a generic amendment to take care of anybody that, of all these thousands of changes we're doing, that they're caught somewhere in the cracks in terms of transitional zoning issue, it'll give the opportunity to correct it. And it'll basically say, allow a member of the public, the administration, or a council member to return to council within 180 days with an amendment to address something that maybe have been missed, or to address an unforeseen consequence of adoption of the new code without any payment of fee. Okay, so I think that should be the generic amendment that would allow, and there's a lot of people here tonight and been involved in this process for six months that have had attorneys and architects and stuff, so this allows for those people, small businesses that may not be aware of the changes, to come back, and anybody else to come back, and there's a process with a fee waiver to finally get their items addressed. That would be my amendments to the council.
Did you, did you have a question? Oh. Councilmember Soria wanted to clarify.
Just for clarification, what was the timeframe, six months?
Yes, 180 days.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other amendments that councilmembers would like to offer at this time? I just wanna make sure that prior to discussing the amendments, I wanna get all the amendments from councilmembers in, and if we have amendments, I wanna put them into the hopper so we can discuss them. Right, Lee just offered, Councilmember Brand just offered an amendment. If you have, if you have an amendment, now would be the time.
Council President, I would like to add, make a motion to add this amendment, and this is talking about inclusionary zoning.
Councilmember Brandal, I apologize. I just remembered, I need to get a second for your amendment. Okay, councilmember, thank you. Go right ahead.
I'd also like to make a motion to amend, the item is about inclusionary zoning. I'd like to add this language. In addition to 15-2201-H, in the same section regarding the purpose of Article 22, nothing in this article shall be construed as a provision for inclusionary zoning where an applicant is required to provide housing affordable to moderate-low and very-low-income households as a condition of approval for residential development. Furthermore, the council shall not adopt a provision for inclusionary zoning as described above unless and until the Fresno General Plan adopted in December 2014 is updated and superseded by a new general plan.
All right, you have a second? Any other motions? Or amendments, rather? Okay.
Oh, we can still add, you're still adding amendments, right?
We can still, yes, right.
Now, I'm gonna ask...
And just for clarity's sake, so we're all clear, we're receiving them now, we'll come back and have the discussion, exactly.
For this one, I need to ask Jennifer a question. Okay. Jennifer, and you might need to take the microphone. And we had a discussion, and you can help me clarify this, you and I had a discussion a couple weeks ago about density transfers. There's a section in there, density transfers, and actually, this inclusionary zoning paragraph, I put right up next to that, and the area of, or actually, that was about density bonuses. But on density transfers, is it now clear inside the development code that if a project comes forward, they can transfer density from one part of the project to another?
So, we've, one of the red lines includes the ability for multi-year large developments that take time to develop, for them to be able to come back and have an overall density, an overall multiple unit count that they had. Say it was a subdivision that was intended to be phased, it'd have 5,000 units, they anticipated 350 in the first phase, maybe 200 in the second phase, and we're phasing it throughout, and the market...
And the market changed, and they decided to do 300 in the first phase and 250 in the second phase, and have shifted their units within the subdivision. This allows for that to occur within a multiple or within a large master plan development, which isn't really the same as a density transfer within a master plan development. That would really require, if it was, if it came into you for adoption, and there was a medium-low and a low and a medium colors on the map for different kinds of densities, the plan, the subdivision would need to conform to each of those colors, and if it didn't, there would need to be a general plan amendment to the map to change where those were. But it's definitely something that the council could do within its approval of the subdivision. The red line does allow for, though, these larger master plan projects to understandably, as the market shifts, to be able to shift units within their overall development.
Okay, so when they do a master plan, they're following a zoning code, and they can shift density requirements as long as the overall project hits the density required by that color code?
Correct.
Is that correct?
They can shift units as long as the overall density meets the color on the map.
And so many things have bounced around since I've got my original copy there. Do you have that language I could look at real quick?
That was in the... You have that?
Council? Sorry, I'm not... Councilmember... So in the packet that came out yesterday at 5:30 with the most recent changes, I'll just refer you to, at the bottom, it's Section 5, Page 33, and it's Section 155310 where the language that Director Clark was referring to was inserted. So that would be... And then it references the modification procedures that are set forth in 15, Section 155015.
Jennifer, I appreciate that, Mayor. Yeah, could I take a look at that real quick?
Yep.
Right there. Jennifer, I'm considering adding this amendment, and I need you to confirm with me that it... I don't really want to add overlapping language that's just redundant, but I want to make sure that this is, that you would be okay with this, or if you feel like this is a proper addition. So I wrote this up before reading that. Planned development permits, this would be a motion to add language to Article 59, planned development permits that provides for density transfer procedure that duplicate the current procedure set out in Sections 12-403-B44 and 12-304-B23 of the Fresno Municipal Code.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney to see if this language and the modifications is consistent with the reference to the existing zoning code that Councilmember Brandow just referenced.
And... Oh, go ahead. Number, Brandow. So you're in Article 59 on this amendment?
What's that? Motion to add language to Article 59.
Okay, in the planned development section?
Yes.
Okay. Can you be more specific, or have we looked into this specifically where in Article 59, or no?
No, this is just adding language to that article to tighten up the possibility for density transfers.
Okay.
I could easily be corrected on this, Mayor and Jennifer, but I just want to make sure that builders are... Excuse me. 12-403-B (44) and 12-304-B (23).
Can somebody reference what section that is? That'd be section...
Okay, well, so the changes that were made pursuant to feedback we received from industry was made in Article 5310.
Okay.
But then you're now in a different article.
In a different article.
And I'm just wanting to make sure we're understanding what you're trying to accomplish.
Let me ask our city attorney then, Talia. We had talked about this, and this is how you helped me draft this up.
That's correct. Councilmember, the language that we discussed is from the current zoning ordinance, and it's referencing planned development conditional use permits. Now, unfortunately, some of the terminology between the existing ordinance and the proposed development code is a little bit confusing because there are similar terms used, but the language from the previous zoning ordinance refers to planned development conditional use permits and the procedure for density transfers within those types of projects. And it is most similar to a planned development permit in the proposed zoning ordinance, which would be, unless the numbers have changed, Article 59.
Okay. What section... I'm sorry, what section is that?
Which, the planned development permit or the...
Is Article 59? Okay, never mind. Got it.
Got it?
Yep.
Talia, you had followed me, and you kind of knew what I wanted to accomplish here as far as allowing for density transfers. Are you comfortable that the development code allows for density transfers?
And councilmember, if we could just receive your amendment, and then we can certainly debate the merit of it.
Okay. Yeah. The only thing is, Council President, I was open to standing corrected on that, and I didn't want to introduce something redundant, but let me do that, and if we find out it's redundant, I can withdraw it. So I'm going to make a motion to add language to Article 59, planned development permits that provide for a density transfer procedure that duplicates the current procedure set out in Sections 12-403-B (44) and 12-304-B (23) of the Fresno Municipal Code.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I want a second.
Okay. Councilmember Flor, still yours. Do you have any other amendments you'd like to offer?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Soria.
One amendment that I would like to actually add would be in the condo conversion section under the relocation assistance program. I just want to make sure that the language in, I believe, Section D, that there's language in there that would say that the actual applicant, once they've put the relocation assistance program in place, or that they detailed it out for the city, that there's actually compliance. So if we can just put clarifying language... So I don't know if it would be as easy as the applicant would comply with the residential assistance program approved by the city.
Councilmember, can you just repeat the section, just so we can find it quickly?
So it is Article 39, Section 153904, subsec... Wait, 3903, sorry.
Okay.
Under the standards for new condominiums and condominium conversions.
Okay.
So there's a relocation assistance program under subsection D. Just want to clarify that they're for compliance purposes, since they are required to do the relocation assistance program plan, or the detailing that has to come to the city, to make sure that there's language that they actually comply with it.
So would you like to add that the report from the property owner be provided to the city?
I don't know if we could just as easily say the applicant will comply with the relocation assistance program approved by the city? Because don't they have to present it to us?
Yes.
Yeah. So I would just say the applicant comply with the relocation assistance program approved by the city.
Okay.
Did you make the motion?
That would be my first motion.
Second. So I'll second that.
Then I just, I wanted to ask a question for clarification and to put on the record. I know that I raised this in our previous meeting with the administration about the disadvantaged, unincorporated communities in terms of where it's located in the development code, and as it relates to fair and proportional payments. I know that we've made commitment and we put in language from our general plan. Just want to make sure that that won't be exactly the requirement, but that, given that we will be doing a SB 244 analysis, that for the record, if there are those grants available, that that's how we would pay for the infrastructure needs that these DUCs may need. Is that correct, or am I...
So currently, in the annexation procedures, Councilmember Soria, we have subsection 6104-C3, disadvantaged, unincorporated communities. The city will partner with the community, if there is wide support for annexation, to coordinate terms to initiate and support the annexation process. So it doesn't exclude any type of financing that might be available, and it could include grants, and it could include partner by the county or by another state agency to assist with that process.
But are there... Because you guys separated them out from fair and proportional payments?
It actually is separated from fair and proportional payments. So revenue neutrality has three sections. Section 1, public services, facilities, and utilities. Section 2 is fair and proportional payments, and Section 3 is disadvantaged, unincorporated communities, which are already separated. Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
And then just for the record, I think my council colleague, Quintero, earlier today mentioned that on the mobile food vendor provisions, that we may be coming back because we do have one other meeting with some of our constituents as it relates to some of the mobile food vending. I think that the majority of the concerns may have been addressed, but there may be some other tweaks that may be necessary as we move forward. So just for the record. For now, I'm good.
And let me just ask for clarity's sake, since Councilmember Soria brought this up, and Councilmember Brand made a motion earlier essentially allowing for the time of one year to clean up inconsistencies. Can that be expanded, and Councilmember Brand, you may have to weigh in on this. Can that be expanded to allow issues like what Councilmember Soria just brought up with mobile vendors, or to allow that time to clarify and potentially clean up things that we want to do?
Certainly, we could use that provision, or it is always the council's prerogative to introduce text amendments to the development code when they arise. So you could handle it in either way.
Okay. Fair enough. City Attorney, the vote threshold is the same, whether we establish a text amendment, whether we introduce a text amendment, or would handle this in a regular development code? Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I have a number of amendments I'd like to add. The first one, I would like to change some language to Section 15-1610, which is...
Was that 1610?
Excuse me. 15-1610 as it relates to electric fences. Is that something that I need to submit that language right now, or as part of the motion? Or do we... Can we construct that as a body when we get to my amendment?
So for this portion, we're just accepting amendments, and then when we get to the item, when we're going to vote on them?
Yes.
It can be constructed differently.
Then we'll just say, we'll just say 15-1610, electric fences.
Would you... Can you offer what you'd like the amendment to be at all, or...
I have a document with some... I have like a red line document. Would you like me to provide copies to members of council?
That would be helpful.
In the interim?
Yeah, and so long as we can try to introduce a way to get the amendment in, could you get a second so we can come back and talk?
I do have... I do believe that I have a second.
Councilmember, it's 15-2010.
Has it changed? I have an October 21st.
This is the red line that the council was introduced on... It's in the September as well. So 15-2010, electric fences.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah. And you said you have a...
I can provide the council with copies.
Okay.
Momentarily.
So what would you like your... For the moment, what would you like your amendment to be?
What, I would like to...
You want to amend this section?
I would like to change permitted locations.
Pursuant to your handout?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to talk about, a little bit about electricity and how it relates to these fences.
Okay, that's no problem. I just want to try to help you.
I'll get the copy for you right away.
So would it be fair to say, Councilmember, that you want to make an amendment pursuant to your handout?
Yes.
And then we can discuss the...
Yes.
Do we have a second for that? Okay. And Councilmember Olivier, if you can just distribute the handout, we'll put it in there.
Okay. And then I have another one. My second one is, involves Section, is it Roman numeral 2-35, talking about CMX corridor center mixed use?
I'm not sure which...
What would you like your amendment to be?
The mixed zone district.
Okay, this would be just, I guess it would be 15-1101. And this would be to discuss... Actually, you have to go to a table to find this, and it's, it involves mixed use along the Blackstone Corridor, and it has to do with service stations.
Do you have a specific amendment you'd like to offer?
Yes, I would like to amend this as it relates to service stations within 500 feet of a bus rapid transit station.
You want to amend it to that?
No, that's the current language.
Oh, okay. What would you like to...
I would like to amend it to zero. I would like to repeal that.
Okay, so you want to repeal Section 15...
Well, no, I mean, it's a table. There's no paragraph that explains it. You have to cross-reference the table with the CMX zoning, so that I would like to get rid of the language that...
That requires a 500-foot...
That requires that kind of buffer between a service station and a BRT stop.
Okay, so your amendment would be to, you would like to remove the 500-foot provision?
Yes.
Can I ask staff? I think that is actual language somewhere. Could we find that?
Yes. It's Table 15-1102.
I have that table.
Use Regulations.
What's this?
Footnote 12.
Okay.
Councilmember, you'd like to amend Table 15-1102.
I think the Council President, I think the table applies to, well, yeah, I think the table applies to a number of different businesses, but as far as a service station...
Service stations specifically.
Footnote 12, I think she gave us the exact footnote. So you're talking about Table 15-1102, footnote 12, you would like to amend that to zero, not a 500-foot requirement?
Just for service stations. Yes, just as it relates to service stations. I would just like that language removed.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? I think, City Clerk, we've captured that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good.
Who was this?
Councilmember Brandow has a second. I just want to make sure we get it right, so when we come back, we...
Thank you.
No, no, no problem. So we have the motion, we have the second, so we'll bop that in there.
And then for the purposes of discussion only, and Director Clark is aware of this because we talked about it just a few moments... because we talked about it just a few moments before the meeting, I'd like to talk about cigar shop hours.
So what we can do for that, Councilmember, is after we have voted and discussed all the amendments, there will be an opportunity to discuss the entire code prior to adoption.
Is that, yes, I'm fit with that.
Oh, is that okay with you?
Yes.
So we won't put that in the amendment portion, we can-
Very good, thank you.
No problem. Councilmember Brandow?
I think that's still up.
Okay, okay. All right. It was brought to my attention that we still don't have a motion for the marijuana ordinance change. Does anyone, would anyone like to offer that, that motion? The city attorney is recommending that we specifically amend the code to allow for enforcement of the medical medicinal, the medical marijuana dispensaries, because currently as it is written, it would be difficult to enforce those provisions, is that correct?
Yeah, essentially, take the existing medical marijuana dispensary language from our zoning code and insert it in the new development code.
Okay. All right, well, we don't have anyone to make that motion as of yet.
Today is-
Okay, Councilmember Cabriolio will make the motion. Do we have a second?
Third is the correct.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion. All right. Okay, the, I'd like to, a couple of things I'd like to clarify, Madam Director. Just last we, we, we met, we were talking about public noticing for by right uses. I did, did not see if that made it into the new errata. Can, if it did, can you point it out to me? And if it didn't, we can discuss it.
If you will look in the errata on page, it's the fourth page of the errata at the bottom of the page, it has roman numeral two dash eighty-two, item footnote sixteen, a courtesy notice will be provided to all properties within 1,000 feet of these uses when approved. And if you go up into the table, and this is table 15-1302, land use regulations for employment districts, this would apply for construction and material yards, as well as for outdoor storage in warehousing and storage classifications. So both of those are listed there. And additionally, in the errata, where's the other? And then on page, roman numeral five dash sixteen, at the top of the page, be mailed notice. All property owners of record within a minimum 1,000 foot radius of the subject property is shown on the latest available assessment roll.
Okay, so we did make that change in there?
Both are in the errata from last night.
Okay, and then I'd like to ensure that, and this may have been hard to call out in the, in this document, but that we're going to make sure that we're going to, we talked about the discretionary routing to council offices on by right uses, we're going to make sure that that's in, in this, as a practice, maybe not necessarily codified in here, but as a practice.
Correct, that, that would be an operating procedure for routing within the department, yes.
Okay, and Councilmembers, just to, so you understand that, we want to make sure that there, we are being very gracious, I think, with our business community by allowing a lot of by right uses and really streamlining the process. We just wanted to make sure that in that streamlining, that the council offices were still informed of those use, those businesses when they come into council districts, because currently, we may have been missed out on the routing. So in talking to the, the department director, we will still be advised of businesses and new uses when they come into the, into our districts.
Council President, so I have a follow-up question, and I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to wait until the discussion of one of the other items and talk about it, but let me ask you this, because you mentioned businesses right now. I've got a very similar concern about by right construction, which in general, I'm a huge fan of, right? It, it speeds up a process that we need to speed up. But then what about, what about in a District Two neighborhood that's got single family? And, and to be honest, the mayor, the mayor worked with me on this in a meeting yesterday, and I think I'm very clear on it, but I want to see if, if you're at the same spot on this. So I don't think we're talking about just businesses. There's this same concern about 1,000 feet noticing of a thousand, of our residents 1,000 feet out from a, a project. Would that apply to District Two neighborhoods, single-family residences, if we wanted to put in a two or three-story multifamily apartment complex? Could they build that by right? Do they still have to go out to the citizenry and let them know that that's being considered in that neighborhood?
As I understand it, and the department director may correct me, that the 1,000 foot requirement that is being recommended would be for any use that has to be publicly noticed. So for your specific question, if in fact someone wanted to build a multifamily construction, if that use was by right, then no. They would not be required to do the noticing. If in fact it required a CUP, then yes. So if-
Jennifer, do you mind if I question?
Well, you know what, you know, you know what I'll say? Can, can we do, can we do this? Can we, let me get through my amendment, and then we can come back and-
Absolutely, thank you.
And talk, and talk about those issues when we kind of go through?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Okay, because I have one other, so thank you, Madam Director, for clarifying those issues right now. And then I have one amendment I'd like to offer, and it's the motion to amend section And what I'd like it, and just bear with me, colleagues, I'll have to read this section, but I'll provide a, there's a handout, I can provide the clerk. And this is in relation to non-residential districts, and I'd like the text to read as follows. A legal non-conforming use shall not be reestablished in any structure in a non-residential district if such legal non-conforming use has ceased for a consecutive 12-month period within five years of the effective date of this code. Once the five-year period from the effective date of this code has passed, a legal non-conforming use shall not be reestablished in any structure in a non-residential district if a legal non-conforming use has been, has ceased for a consecutive period of 90 days or more. So it's a mouthful, I'll provide handouts for that, but I worked with the city attorney in order to get that language right, so.
Council President, is that, is that a citywide, that you're talking about, not a special district?
Citywide.
Okay.
Okay, I made the motion. Councilmember Soria, a second. Councilmember Brandow?
Well, now we're discussing? Oh, no, that was just to discuss. I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Soria, do you have any other motion?
Just, I guess, for clarification back on this public notice, because maybe I'm not understanding. So can you, I guess, walk me through the public notice process, given his amendment? How, what would it look like? For example, if there's a, some type of commercial that would be by right development in, near a residential area?
The amendment that is proposed in the revised Exhibit D refers to noticing for any project that requires public noticing. So if it's a conditional use permit, if it's a rezoning, if it's a general plan amendment, any notice that requires public noticing instead of being 300 feet or 350 feet, 300 and feet distance, it would be 1,000 feet in distance according to this amendment. So that would be any project that requires noticing. The council member also requested, and it's in, again, the revised Exhibit D, that specific industrial uses be provided a courtesy notice upon approval of a by right use for two use classifications. Those are construction and material yards, and outdoor storage of warehousing, storage and distribution.
So this would be after the development permit?
That would be when a project has been approved. So a courtesy notice will be provided to all properties within 1,000 feet of these uses when approved. So on the development permit, then there would be a courtesy notice provided to all properties within 1,000 feet.
So what do we do now? Do we notice people before development permit?
We only notice today for discretionary permits. So anything that's a conditional use permit, anything that is a rezon, anything that is a general plan amendment, those are all provided notice for public information and public input. So there's a period of time in which people can, can provide input. Same would occur in the new development code. Anything that requires a conditional use permit, a rezon, or a general plan amendment would require notification. It's just the notification boundaries, instead of being 300 feet, would be 1,000 feet.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so I, I think, do we have any other amendments that we'd like to read into the, have read into the record? If not, we will, we will begin moving through our, the variety of amendments for discussion. So as we move through the amendments for discussion, we'll take the amendment, we will, we, every amendment that we will discuss has already been motioned and seconded. We'll take the, we'll take the amendment for discussion, and we'll vote on them after the discussion, and we'll take them one by one. And then after we've addressed all of the amendments, we'll then vote on the entire code as amended. Okay? And then, so if there's a topic, like Councilmember Olivier had, wanted to discuss a particular topic that may not have been amended, after we get through the amended amendments, prior to adoption of the code, we will have another opportunity to discuss general topics for the development code.
Council President, that, that itself could lead to another amendment, is that correct?
It could, it could. We, we, we won't completely, I mean, obviously, we can amend all the way up until the code, but yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Soria?
For the ag and labor housing, I wanted to make sure, I know that I've spoken with Talia about the health and safety code and what were required. So I know we talked about maybe inserting some clarification language, because we are required by state, by the state. So I think, I think you provided me an email with, with that. So I'd actually like to offer that amendment. It's already required under the health and safety code, so it is state law. I just want to make sure that the development code reflects that for ag, ag labor housing.
That is correct, Councilmember. The health and safety code does require certain provisions for agricultural labor housing, so the, the language that I provided to you would, would require that, if adopted, would require that if there's a conflict between the development code and the health and safety code section pertaining to that agricultural labor housing, the health and safety code would prevail.
Yeah, so I would like to add that language. So I would make a motion to make sure that we reference the health and safety code, so that the development code is consistent with the state law as it relates to the ag labor housing provision.
And if I may, Councilmember Soria, is that a reference to health and safety code section 17021.6?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion. All right, so Madam Clerk, would you begin in order, letting me know which, which amendments we need to discuss, please?
Okay, I'll start at the top, and I will read you what I have. I might not have caught all of it, so you guys might need to walk me through it a little bit, but I can get you started. So the, the first one is from Councilmember Brand, and-
And I think I remember, Councilmember Brand actually gave us a handout on, on his, on his amendment, so Councilmember Brand, if you want to introduce, you're a member for conversation.
On the, on the second one regarding the generic cleanup, I just want to clarify, Councilmember Soria, we wanted to know the effective date, so I clarified the 180-day period would begin from January 3, 2016. That's the clarification.
Do we have any further discussion on Councilmember Brand's amendment?
Okay.
If there's none, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
All opposed?
Item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Quintero absent. Madam Clerk, what is the second amendment?
Okay, and the next one is the short ones from Councilmember Brand, which were the amendments that he read into the record from 16-6102E3.
Okay.
Do you guys need me to read those all in full?
No, I don't need you to read them all in full, but let me make sure I got, so, City Attorney, do I have the, Councilmember Brand has, we have to take each one of his amendments individually, correct?
That's entirely up to you. You could vote on all of Councilmember Brand's motions together, or take them individually?
We'll take them individually. So the, the next one, Councilmember Brand, was the concept plan amendment that you offered. And what I have from you is, once the concept plan is received by the city, the development may proceed if no general plan amendment is required. Amending section 16-6102E3.
We've already approved this one.
Right.
As you said, again, once the concept- Sorry, once the concept plan is received by the city, the development may proceed if no general plan amendment is required. That's, you've got a copy, written copy too, so that's my amendment.
Councilmember Soria?
Can you explain to me why is this needed? I'm just trying to understand the con, the amendment, the concept.
Okay, I'll send, I'll explain the concept of the concept. This was an issue raised by some members of BIA regarding this new plan that basically puts the city in the future by right. So in other words, any, any subdivision that's, that's consistent with the existing zoning, that they're going to put a, you know, 100-unit home subdivision in the R1, or the appropriately zoned area, if it comes in within city limits, it's by right, there's no CUP, it really makes it business-friendly, expedites the process, saves a lot of money. The question comes in when you get into annexed area, into, in the areas of the sphere of influence, the question is, what do you have to do? And there was a question regarding the language, when you come into these areas, do you have to do a general plan amendment? And the answer is, if it's consistent with the existing zoning, it does not require a general plan amendment, it only requires a concept plan. So the concept plan, this clarifies that once the developer, for example, you're coming in 40 acres of 160-acre area that's zoned, a combination of residential, commercial, that once they introduce their concept plan, the concept plan is, I'm going to put a subdivision right here, and the planning principle is that, okay, that's the subdivision, where's the ride aid, where's the, you know, the office complex? So they essentially lay out the plan for the entire 160-acre zoning parcel. This is clarifies, once the developer submits his plan to the planning commission and then to the city council, it then becomes the responsibility of the city of Fresno to process the plan, and no general plan amendment is required. And there was some confusion regarding whether or not it was the responsibility of the developer to go out and continue this. Once that concept plan is introduced, ultimately, the planning commission and the city council will vote to either approve or modify the concept plan. If that makes sense.
So as the development currently is written, what would be the process?
I think the process now is that when you came in there, you would have to basically outline, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer.
The, the process is silent on who takes the concept plan to the planning commission and the city council. I think the council member was wanting to clarify that once it is provided by the applicant, that the city staff would be responsible then for taking it forward to the planning commission and to the city council for deliberation and for determination on whether or not that concept plan would become the new land use plan for that area, and would not hold up the development from proceeding.
Yeah.
And the other thing, once- And the other thing, once the, a specific plan is actually developed, and there are, there's a map out there that outlines which areas don't even require that. If, if there's an approved specific plan, for example, in some areas of Sega, then the concept plan isn't needed because the specific plan has already outlined the uses. Within probably two or three years, when all the, the existing areas have these specific plans developed, that point in time, the entire city of Fresno and all the sphere of influence will then be considered by right and what require this. So this is a transition document and essentially clarified an ambiguity.
Okay. All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Quintero absent. We have now, Councilmember Brand, another motion by you, which is to allow a member of the public, the administration, or a council member to return to council within 180 days with an amendment to address something that may have been missed or to address an unforeseen consequence of the adoption of a new quote without paying, without payment of the fee. The 180-day period shall commence from the date effective of 1/3/2016.
That seems relatively straightforward.
That's correct.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion on that? All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Quintero absent. Okay, I believe Councilmember Brand, we have taken care of all of your, all of your motions. Madam Clerk, who's next?
That's Steve next, Councilmember Brandow. And, yeah. So the first one that I had for you is the one with the inclusionary zoning.
Okay. Councilmember Brandow, by any chance, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, I have it. I have copies.
Do you have enough for all of us?
What's that?
Do you have enough for all of us?
Yeah. No, I can go, I can have a made.
So here's what we're going to do. We're going to, we're going to recess for five minutes. And here's what I'm going to ask councilmembers to do, and I'm going to do this myself. If you wrote out your motion, if, if you could make copies for all of the councilmembers so we can look at them prior to voting on them, that would be great. We'll recess for five minutes.
Okay, here's inclusionary. Where is leave list? Did you see leave list? Oh, oh, here it is. Well, we, we... So, it is true that... It was the intent, isn't it?
You're sneaky. You're sneaky, Brandon.
But our mayor caught you.
All right. Thank you all for your indulgence. If I could have all council members come back to their seats. And Madam Clerk, if you can let us know who's motion is next.
It was still mine.
That's still your... Okay.
Yeah.
And inclusionary zoning, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it up there? I think Lindsey gave you one.
So for you, Councilmember Brandau, I have inclusionary zoning paragraph, as well as the planned development permits.
Yeah, first one, inclusionary zoning. Now, you all have a copy that begins with the word addition, because I gave you the other, the other motion printed out as well. But I'll read it so the public can hear it again. And then I'll just describe it in layman's terms, and then we can have a discussion or vote. Addition to 15-2201-H, in the section regarding the purpose of Article 22, "Nothing in this article shall be construed as a provision for inclusionary zoning where an applicant is required to provide housing affordable to moderate-low and very-low-income households as a condition of approval for a residential development. Furthermore, the council shall not adopt a provision for inclusionary zoning as described above unless and until the Fresno General Plan adopted in December 2014 is updated and superseded by a new general plan." So it's a protection that lasts the course of this general plan, because the Development Code is, is the teeth of the general plan. So essentially what this is, is a protection for the life of this general plan, that this is not, that these affordable housing articles inside the, inside the Development Code is not to be construed as a, as a provision for inclusionary zoning. And really, it's a discussion that tonight we would all give our stamp of approval on and probably understand. But for me, it's a clarification, just like Councilmember Soria was clarifying her, in one of her amendments. For me, it's a clarification that helps out for fut-, you know, anybody in the future reading this section of the Development Code.
All right, well, you have a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Councilmember Soria.
I just want to make a comment in terms of, just one distinction in terms of the clarification. My clarification actually references state law. So state law actually requires us to, for the ag labor housing. So it's, there's a little bit of a difference. I understand in terms of you're, you're trying to clarify it for your purpose in terms of specifically inclusionary zoning. And so I guess if you can just explain to me the need for it. What, what is your intent behind the amendment?
Yeah, I want to protect, I want to protect householders in the city of Fresno, District 2 and throughout the city, from anybody that might interpret this in the future to be construed, to be connected to inclusionary zoning. So it's just a, an additional protection within the Development Code.
And so you feel that the, our current general plan, our current general plan has some kind of statement that encourages inclusionary housing? I guess I'm trying to figure out why we need it.
Well, it's my feeling that, you know, these plans are put into place for a very long time. Council President, I can't remember. When was the last time we did and updated the Development Code? It's been like 50 years or something? 51 years? So over the course of time, you know, people begin to read things in that they prefer to read in. And I, so for me, it's a protection to make sure it's never to be construed as inclusionary zoning, which is becoming a prevalent thought in the state of California and has been adopted in other cities. And I want to protect the city of Fresno by protecting property values, property rights, not just within District 2, but within the city of Fresno, so.
I will say that I won't be able to support this motion, because I think that in terms of, there needs to be a broader discussion in terms when we're talking about affordable housing. I think that as policymakers, we need to really have a public debate as to what is it that residents throughout our city are comfortable with before we actually put something in the Development Code stating that this should be, shouldn't be construed as, that we are providing for inclusionary zoning. So today, I won't be able to support the amendment. And I would encourage my other council colleagues to really think about your supporting this, or not supporting this, because I think that it does deserve to have a greater debate in terms of policy as policymakers and looking at long-term in terms of housing options throughout the city of Fresno.
Councilmember Brand.
You, are you...
Well, I, oh, I put my phone on. I, I understand the arguments here. But I think personally, inclusionary zoning is basically saying, "I give up on, on infill," because you're disincentivizing people to, to live in areas. We're trying to, in fact, the entire thrust of the general plan is to encourage infill, the transit corridors. And when you say, "Okay, don't worry about that. We're going to give you a free pass and move, you can move to a new area." I think it just moves things backwards. So I'm going to be supportive of the motion.
Okay. I'm trying to, and Council President Emeritus, I'm trying to find, you're adding a section here in 15-2201. Is that correct? Am I interpreting that right?
Yes.
And, and help me understand, and I may ask this of Jennifer, I'm sorry, of the director first. In our, in the Development Code or in the general plan, are there requirements for inclusionary zoning?
No, there are not. This particular chapter in the Development Code references affordable housing density bonuses that are allowed but not required.
Right. So are there any requirements anywhere that we have for inclusionary zoning or affordable housing requirements with development?
We are required to have land available for certain densities of housing, which could be available and affordable to persons at various income levels per state law in the housing element. But it just defines how many units are available at various density levels within the city. And that's in the housing element portion of the general plan.
So would this motion in any way conflict with state law?
No.
So state law still requires us to have certain affordable housing densities?
It, it requires us to have certain densities, yes.
Okay, so in the general plan, do we, or do we have any inclusionary zoning requirements?
No.
Did you want to weigh in, Madam Attorney?
But I'm, I'm going to let the city attorney address the question of the housing element and what specifically it requires in the general plan per state law.
Thank you, Director. The housing element requires a capacity and... Let me start over. Both an assessment of needs and a provision explaining how we will have the capacity to serve our housing needs throughout the city of Fresno. So the housing element needs to determine what our housing needs are for all income levels and what land is available to provide housing across those income levels, including for affordable housing. So the key there is it's a capacity analysis. The city is not required to actually develop all types of housing, but we are required to provide availability of land through zoning and the opportunity for applicants to provide that type of housing.
Okay. So the, so I'll ask you as well. This, this provision does not conflict with state law in any way?
It does not conflict with the requirements for providing affordable housing capacity.
Okay, so at some point, if, in our housing element, if we need to provide affordable housing capacity, we would still be able to require that of developments. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that what we're, what we're talking about, this is not in any way going to prevent us from requiring affordable housing in new developments?
That's correct, Council President. We will not be prevented from affordable housing capacity. If I may, just add one brief clarification. Inclusionary zoning provisions are often ordinances that require the provision of affordable housing. The housing element and the capacity analysis is about providing capacity of land to be used for affordable housing.
Well, I'll tell you, I, Councilmember Brandau, when I first read this, I certainly was troubled, because I do agree with Councilmember Soria that, that the, the idea of inclusionary zoning probably requires a fuller debate than this. But I don't, I'm not necessarily sure that this particular amendment does anything that we wouldn't already do. I, I think that if we needed to require it, we still could. And we don't have any inclusionary zoning right now, anyway. So, and if we ever need to do a text amendment, we can do it. If we wanted to revisit this issue, so.
Council President, you know, we're tasked with updating the Development Code. And, and so my protection, and I've heard you use this argument many times yourself, is what will other councils perceive at some point in the future? And they, and they will have their own tasks to, to take on. We have to take on the Development Code. So I wanted to make very clear that this was not to be construed as mandatory inclusionary zoning. And you asked your questions about, are we violating a state requirement? The answer is no. You asked your question about, does this prohibit us from achieving our affordable housing numbers in the city of Fresno? The answer to that is no. So, but I just don't want, so I'm asking for protection of clarification that this is never to be construed as inclusionary zoning for the life of the general plan. And so I think we've answered your questions, your, your main concerns. So we're going to do a housing element update within the city of Fresno in a couple of weeks or months. And we're going to tackle all that stuff there. But this is not against affordable housing. It's just protection against mandatory inclusionary zoning.
Councilmember Brandau, would you be willing to amend your, this paragraph exempting the last line unless and until the Fresno General Plan adopted in December 2014 is updated and superseded by a new general plan? Would you be willing to strike that last line?
So it would end...
As, as described above?
Yeah, Council President, that, that actually hinders then the very guts of what I'm trying to do, which is add a protection of clarification to the general plan. And so I think I'm going to have to leave it in there.
All right, fair enough. All right, we have no further council comment. Thank you, Council, Councilmember Brandau, for indulging me with that. That is a, I think this provision, absent that, would be something that I could support. I think this probably, that last line makes it go a little too far in, you know, tying it to a future general plan, you know, 25 years away. I think that the conversation probably deserves, you know, we want to be able to discuss this maybe within five or 10 years, maybe not 25 years. So I think that that's probably going to be my problem with that. But I certainly understand what you're, what you're doing here. So with that, we'll take a, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Item passes 422. Were councilmembers, member, councilmembers Baines and Soria voting no? Your next motion, Councilmember Brandau, was the motion to add language to Article 59.
Yeah, and Council President, thank you. This one's really brief. Motion to add language to Article 59, planned development permits that provides for a density transfer procedure that duplicates the current procedure set out in Sections 12-403-B (44) and 12-304-B (23) of the FMC or Fresno Municipal Code. And during our recess, I spoke both with Jennifer Clark and Talia from the city attorney's office. And they both feel that it's valid to continue with this amendment. And then they can clean the, they can clean up, justify between the two pieces before the final viewing of the Development Code in, in a couple of weeks. So, so with that, I was worried that I was just being redundant. They're saying it's better to put it in there. So I'm going to follow their lead and, and continue with this motion.
You have a motion and you have a second. I don't see any council members punched up. I'll ask a very quick question. So basically, what we're trying to do here is make sure that in a master plan development, that if the development takes, I don't know, 15 years, that if we have, you know, 100, 100 units planned for it, and 10 years in, you know, if we have lot OB that's supposed to be 6,000 square feet, if we want to come back later and be able to make, you know, we have lot, you know, SB 10,000 square feet, we can swap those lots, swap the densities of those lots. We want to be able to...
Swap the densities as long as the overall density requirement is met within the city of Fresno.
Right. Just, I'm just, I thought that was it. I was just clarifying. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 60 with Councilmember Quintero absent. Councilmember Brandau, were those your only two motions?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
All right. Counts, Madam Clerk, who's, who's next on our motion list?
The next to show is Councilmember Soria's. Her first motion, which I show has to do with a convertish, excuse me, a condo conversion. And there's some language that will comply with Sections 39, 59, 03. I don't know if I have that right.
So let me just clarify really quick. Councilmember Soria, you have two motions, right? You have, you have a condo conversion and you have the agricultural labor housing, right?
Right.
Okay, we're going to take your condo conversion relocation plan first.
So my motion would be that within the, the approval process for the condo conversion and the applicant already is required to do a relocation assistance plan. So we just add clarification language that they, you know, they file it with the city, obviously, and then that they provide a summary of the assistance that they provided prior to the new condo occupancy.
You have a motion in a second. Do we have, there's no, Councilmember Olivier.
Hi, Councilmember Soria. Can you, can you explain the impetus for making this motion? Just explain to me how it would work in practice. If you could tell me what, what the existing plan is for condo conversion and then what this...
So I just want to make sure that they're, that they are complying with the relocation assistance plans that they actually are required to do during the condo conversion.
So required by who, the city or the state?
The city.
So it's already required?
Yeah. So we already, I don't know if it's a state requirement.
It's a state requirement or, or city requi-, so it's a state requirement?
State requirement. So to make sure that there is clarifying, clarifying language that they actually provide the summary, the summary of the assistance that they provide, that they said they were going to provide.
In accordance with state law?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 60 with Councilmember Quintero absent. Councilmember Soria, your next motion was a motion regarding agricultural labor housing.
In this one, again, we're just referencing the state health and safety code. So you guys all have a copy of the language, but I'll read it. It would say, "In the event of a conflict between this code and the California Health and Safety Code, Section 17021.6, relating to agricultural land use designations for employee housing, the health and safety code shall prevail."
All right, we have a motion, you have a second. With no further discussion, all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 60. Councilmember Soria, were those all of your motions?
Those were all my motions. I did have still some, two questions, but maybe I could address them when you're talking about, when you're providing your motion on notice, because I had some questions.
Okay, we can, we can certainly revisit that. And, and we can also, there will be another opportunity once we have all the amendments compiled, we will also have an opportunity to discuss whatever outstanding issues we have to.
Perfect, thank you.
Madam Clerk, who's next?
Next is Councilmember Olivier.
Councilmember Olivier, you have your electric fence motion.
I do, thank you, Council President. If everyone could turn to 15-2010. We could have Allison Wong come forward, please. Okay, the 15-2010 is actually the, the way the Development Code looks currently. The page which I distributed is from an older version. So there has been some contact between our planning department and also the folks from Electric Guard Dog. And I, I want to, first of all, thank you for taking an interest in, in our city and also in this process. This process was special because anyone could, could really walk in off the street and make suggestions to make this document better. I think that's a, a good testament to the process and especially here in the city of Fresno, to invite that kind of inclusiveness. And so as, as it relates to electric fences before, I just really wanted to address, because I think it's important. I think public safety is important. I think in a city where our police department can't be in every place at all times, I think it's important that we empower our constituents to protect their investments. And so that's why I, that's why I took this up. Allison, can you, and, and just to kind of quell any panic that might come from, from this dais regarding the safety and, and implementation of electric fences, they are currently in use in the city of Fresno in a number of locations. And it isn't just the one company that provides this service. It's, it's a number of companies. But just, Allison, can you come forward and, and give us a, the 90-second synopsis of, of what your company does and, and a little bit about the product and, and how it's safe, please?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Olivier. My name is Allison Wong, and I represent the Electric Guard Dog, which is the manufacturer of a 12-volt battery-powered security fence. I just want to address just very briefly four points. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the, the new Senate bill that was unanimously approved by the legislature that permits the electric fence, just so that you, everybody feels comfortable that this is a fence that is going to be in use throughout California and has, is, has been approved by the legislature. I want to talk briefly about how it works, where it's located, and how it protects the first responders. How it work, well, first, the legislature approved Senate Bill 582 recently. It goes into effect on January 1st. It permits the electric fence pursuant to specific energizer requirements that I want to discuss next. Energizer requirements, how does it work? The electric security fence is powered by a 12-volt battery. The system amplifies voltage to 7,000 volts. It releases a pulse every 1.3 seconds. The pulse only lasts 1/10,000th of a second. The pulse travels along the wires. The wires are located inside a non-electrified perimeter fence. If the pulse does not return to the original location, then the system senses a breach. That's when it notifies Alarm Central. Alarm Central notifies the property owner. The property owner pulls up their, on their, you know, on their computer at home, the outside security cameras, and they take a look and they see, oh, am I being robbed? Or has the wind blown some leaf or some branch into my fence? And if they're being robbed, then they call the police. So there's really no issue with false alarms here. The system is set up to monitor through the property owner, and the property owner or Alarm Central will call the police. Now, just briefly, where is it located? If there's a block wall, it's located above the block wall on pieces of metal that are angled away from the sidewalk to protect unintentional contact. If there's a chain-link fence or some sort of tubular steel wall, then it's behind the wall so that people cannot touch it. So it, just to protect the safety of the public. There are warning signs every 60 feet, bright yellow warning signs that say 7,000 volts. It would be very unusual for someone to come into contact with the electric fence unless they were trying to rob the business. And in terms of first responders, there's, typically, there's a Knox box that's attached that allows the first responder to turn off the fence. So this is not a product that has been hastily designed. A lot of thought has been gone into it. It's approved by the International Electrotechnical Commission for use throughout international applications. And compared to the agricultural cattle fence, this has, it's much lower voltage. For example, just so they'll know, everybody will feel comfortable, there are several employees who, over the course of time, have come into contact with the fence. What happens is where they touch the fence, it hurts. It's a, it's a little bite. But it does not result in lasting injury. People don't have to go to the doctor, they don't go to the hospital. So compared to something such as barbed wire fencing or concertina wire, this type of a product really deters theft. It doesn't actually hurt people.
So the, if I can address what you just talked about, the, the purpose of this is to trigger an alarm and to let the person know, hey, an alarm has been triggered. Get away from here. The purpose of this is not to electrocute people so they fall on the ground.
This product will not electrify anybody.
Okay. I have a, a dear friend who grew up in Porterville who did, as a child, repeatedly touch a cattle fence with other children. And this person is doing just fine today. And so... This person is my chief of staff. So, so I guess the point that I'm trying to make is that this is a, a product that has, has been approved for use by the, the state legislature. And of course, the state legislature has everyone's health and safety very prominently in mind. has everyone's health and safety very prominently in mind. And so what I would like to do at this point is to, and, and thank you, Allison, you're available for other questions, right, for further questions. I have now, just to, to make sure that we're literally on the same page, Jennifer, do you, do you see the, the list of the changes? I have two different, I have an old electric fence page and I have a new electric fence page. Are you, are, is, is your staff able to reconcile these two so that we can get the correct, what I believe to be the correct? Maybe you could come back while staff is looking at this. What are, what are you attempting to do with this language? Because I've, I've brought this language forward on, on your behalf, the, the changes on your behalf. What are you attempting to do here?
We, the city has a policy currently, Policy C zero-zero-four, that permits the electric fence in the M-one and the M-two zone. We would like to expand the scope and allow it in all non-residential zones consistent with the new legislative, the Senate Bill five-eight-two.
All non-residential zones, okay.
And I, I do have a red line and a clean copy of the markup that we would like to propose be adopted by the council tonight.
And I did pass that out, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So I guess at, at this time, I, I guess, Director Clark, do you have a, so are we okay on the reconciliation of that? And I guess any questions from Councilmembers?
I have Councilmembers that would like to ask questions, if that's okay.
Okay, of myself and also Allison's available to answer questions.
Councilmember Brandal.
Oh, yeah, Allison, I wanted to do as, the second to Councilman Olivier's motion here for your product. I would, and I know as you spoke, when we met earlier, maybe five or six weeks ago, you had talked about in, that in almost all the cities in which you operate and, and install your fence product, law enforcement are big fans of your product. Is that correct? Could you talk about that just for a second?
Absolutely. You know, in this day and age of reduced resources and, you know, vegetarian cuts, law enforcement likes this product because it prevents them from having to enforce property crimes. It allows the business owner to, to enforce their own, to, to protect their own property so that the police department doesn't have to.
And, and I appreciate that. Right now, in our city, we're going through a, a fairly big conversation about vagrancy and property crime issues, and although this doesn't apply to residential, I'm getting in North Fresno, are, many of our businesses are harassed by people that I think your product would really help. So I'm, I'm glad to second this.
The deterrent, it, it works very well as a deterrent. That's exactly how it works.
I love deterrence. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Council President, I'm done.
All right, we have, was there any other addition? So as I understand your motion, you just want to expand the land uses from M-one and M-two, which, what are the new, what are those new designations now, Madam Director?
Currently, in the red line version, electric fences may be permitted in industrial districts that do not share a common property line with a residential district or use, not including a caretaker unit. And electric fences shall not encroach in the public right-of-way. So currently, they're allowed in industrial, heavy and in industrial light zone districts in the proposed code.
Okay, so Councilmember Olivier, with this, with this motion, you want to make a motion that you include all?
Non-residential.
All zones excluding residential, right?
Yes.
So not residential?
No residential.
How many, what other additional zones would that include, Madam Director?
So that would include office, business park, regional business park, buffer zone. It would also include all of the commercial districts, which, you'll give me, all of the mixed-use districts, so neighborhood mixed-use, corridor mixed-use, regional mixed-use, and then all of the commercial districts, commercial Main Street, community commercial, regional, commercial general, commercial highway and auto, and commercial recreation.
So...
Oh, and schools, parks, and public institutions.
So Councilmember Olivier, I, I could be supportive of, of an expanded zones, but not everyone excluding residential. I, I think maybe if there are, like, I'm not, I probably would not be supportive of schools, I would not be supportive of buffer zones, I would not be supportive, potentially maybe not even of commercial, I'm just thinking about some of our commercial venues. I don't know, necessarily know if I want to be at the movie theater with an electric fence. So I think that I can certainly be open to expanding it beyond just industrial, but not everything beyond, I mean, even mixed-use developments that could include some residential could be, could be involved in this.
Director Clark, wouldn't they have to come for, don't they have to come to the city for a permit to put this thing anyway?
Correct. The property owner shall apply for a permit with the city prior to installation.
And so if we, if we change this language to say, "In all non-residential zones," the city would have to give it? Or there are still guidelines on, on how the fence, how and where the fence can be put? Obviously, if, obviously, there's an element of personal responsibility here, too. I mean, if someone is, is, has an environment for children, the owner of that place is not going to put in an electrified fence. This is for, I mean, typically, this is for protecting commercial property, and this is for, typically for protecting warehouses. I mean, have you seen in, in your experience that this is used at, around churches and schools and mixed-use?
Never.
Where typically are these places found? I mean, this, I believe that this product can augment public safety, and I also believe in the discretion of, of our community and the discretion of our business owners.
I think we, I think we agree, Councilmember Olivier. I, I think what I'm asking for, though, is, we obviously, with what we adopt here today, have to take some personal responsibility, too. So there probably are a couple land uses that we certainly want to make sure we exclude, and I think we're probably in agreement on that. So I, I think we want to make sure we call out some and say that we know for sure that they won't be here and not necessarily just rely on the public to do it. But I have Councilmember Soria that's punched up as well. Councilmember Soria.
I just maybe would offer that, maybe in those areas that Councilmember Baines mentioned that are of concern, that we would maybe, if we want to provide an option where they can come before us and then to get the, to, for us to allow them to do it, maybe we provide that avenue so we're not just saying we won't, but they would have to come to our body for approval in some of these areas.
Well, I, I can appreciate your opinion, but I don't, I don't think that, that installing, I mean, it's a twelve-volt battery, right, which is a square. I, I don't think that a property owner installing a twelve-volt battery-operated system to anything would rate the attention of having to come to the, to the city council. I think that this is something that can be handled very simply and administratively. Do, I mean...
Well, Councilmember Olivier, for me, absent some, some further clarity on land uses, I wouldn't be supported in, in kind of the broad stroke that you, you're providing it. If you kind of, if you allow some exemptions, and I think that there are probably some common sense ones, I think we can probably get to agreement. I mean, if, if my, if my support is, is important.
If you have a comment, go ahead with that, and then I have a question for you after.
I wanted to respond to your comment about it might not be appropriate in commercial zones. The problem with prohibiting it in commercial zones is that there are land uses in commercial zones that really want it in the city and that where it is appropriate, like an equipment, storage yard, any, you know, the, the easy answer would be to put something in the code that says, "You can only have it where you have outside storage." And there are some cities that have done that, but the problem with that is then you get into the issue of, well, what is outside storage? You know, typically, it is used for businesses that do have something valuable that's stored outside because that's where you want to protect it. But to, to say that it shouldn't be permitted in the commercial zone is going to cause a problem for quite a few businesses in the city that have actually lined up and are waiting, really want to use this, this product. Because currently, with it only being permitted in M-one and M-two, there's even a manufacturing zone where there's a business out there that really wants it, so.
Yeah, and, and I think, quite, quite honestly, you're illustrating my point that this, we should probably discuss this in a little more detail, because not every commercial zone is applicable, but some could be. So I think that there's room for that, but we haven't, we haven't got there yet. Councilmember Brand.
To lend my experience on this, and I had a district meeting with the commercial owners of Blackstone Avenue about two months ago. Councilman Brandal was there, and we had, you know, merchants really concerned about the crime in their area, primarily from vagrants that were excessive. And I think if we make something subject to review, the only problem there is that in the city of Fresno, that means typically you're measured in months, not, not hours or days or weeks, and that it just takes too long. And I think that these business owners need the relief because, quite frankly, with Prop forty-seven and actually no accountability to enforce these low-level property crimes, they need a cost-efficient way. You get into like River Park, the owners there have enough money for a private security force to enforce those, but these guys own, own auto supply shops, own beauty salons, these small business people need these types of protections. And you mentioned the, the equipment yard. I mean, I get these calls all the time, and I don't think anybody's going to die from an electric fence. And I understand the aesthetics, and if it was a perfect world, we had, you know, you know, a hundred more police officers, and we had jail cells to put people in and so on, we probably wouldn't need this stuff. But the reality is, in the city of Fresno now, we have this need in, for business, and we're exempting, correct me if I'm wrong, residential areas. You're talking about commercial areas only? So for, Jennifer, so...
No, not exactly, only, we're talking about everything except residential.
Okay. So some of these businesses along Blackstone, like German Auto Supply, that I think they, they back up to residential, that they would be exempt, they would not, they would be not allowed to put these fences up?
Currently, the way it's proposed, that is, that is correct. But based on this amendment, that would be stricken altogether. I would strongly recommend that the council consider keeping the provision that regardless of what zone districts or uses are considered, that we keep in do not share a common property line with a residential district or use, not including a caretaker unit. So for example, Daryl's has a caretaker unit, so that would be not included in the residential use, but if it was adjacent to a residential district or residential use, it wouldn't be permitted. Or you could consider adding a conditional use permit for certain uses. It could be footnoted in the use table for specific uses that had, say, outdoor storage, like a construction yard.
What if we put a, like a trial period, like a hundred-and-eighty days, that, can that be done within the code to allow for a transitional solution?
I, I think...
Could be evaluated to see, is it really going to create problems?
So, once it's permitted, you would be saying to the property owner, "You may have this for a hundred-and-eighty days, but if we see a problem, we're going to take away that permit." Is that correct?
Right, I know, it would be a time limited, you know, to be subject to review, and then if it, if it goes past, say, the initial period of time, to be reviewed, let's say, once a year, or if there are, yes?
I just had one thought, is because SB five-eight-two goes into effect on January first, if the city wanted to try something like that, the easiest way to do it would be to strike the electric fence regs altogether, have no regulations. Because if there were no regulations, SB five-eight-two would control. And then you could go through an a hundred-and-eighty-day period and see how that works, and if you didn't like it, then you could introduce new regulations which would, because SB five-eight-two controls unless there's a conflicting local reg.
So it would be subject to state, state regulation.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brand. Might I offer something, and I hate to do this, but I just want to say this. I actually think that the planning director offered a really good solution for Councilmember Olivier's amendment that gets him, I think, everything he wants to do, but then offers a few protections for, you know, the things that we're concerned about, resident, residential units.
Repeat that, Jennifer. Go ahead.
And if you're, and if you were to be supportive of that, I think I could support your, your motion.
A few protections for residential neighborhoods?
I think that, yeah, I think that what, what she offered was quite, in my, in my opinion, the way we can get through this without having to go through land use by land use.
Sure. Allison, it appears that it's, it's, the, the council is going in a direction that I don't think that, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I mean, it seems as if this body is moving in a direction of, 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 okay, we're willing to, to go ahead and do this, but they have a problem with industrial districts that do not share a common property line with a residential district or use, not including caretaker units.
The problem with that is that the fence is already behind a perimeter fence. There's, there's really no need for that protection, because what that does is it, it prevents people who share a common boundary, who, businesses, from being able to use the fence.
So you're telling me that this product is installed behind perimeter fences?
Yeah, behind the perimeter.
So there's a perimeter fence keeping people out?
Right.
And then your product goes inside the perimeter fence?
Exactly. So nobody can really touch it.
Oh.
I mean, it's behind another fence. It's either behind, if it's a block wall, it'll be up on the top angled away, or if it's tubular steel, it's behind with, you know, some, like mesh protecting so that you can't...
So children cannot walk up to this and touch it?
No.
Okay.
To protect inadvertent contact.
Does, does that help clarify at all, that the, the fence is not accessible to anyone unless you're a crook trying to get into the, gain access to the facility?
Yeah, let me, let me be clear, I don't think, I don't think my only issue is, is that I'm worried about a child getting shocked. I think that aesthetically, we're, we're, we're also concerned about just neighborhoods having that next to a residential property. So I think there's an aesthetic piece of it, too, which is why I think that the director's compromise was pretty good. I don't think that there are tons of situations in the city of Fresno that would fall under that, but I think that that particular provision that she offered probably gets us to a unanimous vote.
You know, I'm going to go ahead and, and just ask, ask council to vote on it the way it is, and then if it, if it fails, then, and then maybe we, I don't, I don't, I don't think we... I, no, I don't think we need a trial period either. I think, I think we should...
I have Councilmember Soria.
Okay.
Well, it seems like you've already made your mind in terms of trying to go forward with, as you've, you're proposing, I was just in agreement, too, with my council colleague here, Baines, as it regards to some type of compromise. You can always, I guess, come back, but if you feel strongly about offering your current language, then you can move forward.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? No. All right, passes four to two. Councilmembers Baines and Soria voting no. Councilmember Quintero absent. Councilmember Olivier, was that your only?
I have another motion.
Oh, you have another, okay, I'm sorry. What was your other motion?
I know everybody wants to go.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Olivier, I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
This item involves, and I'm going to need some help from our, our friends in the planning department on this one. This involves CMX, and I have page, roman numeral two dash thirty-five. It includes, I wasn't able to find any specific language, but I, I believe the language for this is in the table that's available on that page. This is, again, it's roman numeral two dash thirty-five, talking about service stations, allowing them with a CUP, and this is, of course, the corridors, especially Blackstone and Kings Canyon corridors. Or is this only Blackstone? It's, it's, it's both?
It's, and Shaw.
A Blackstone, Shaw, and Kings Canyon. The, the, the current language prohibits the location of a service station within five-hundred feet of a BRT station, and there's, and this is a special limitation on these service stations within a mixed-use area. And, and for me, this is, I don't think we need to have this language in this document, and simply for the fact that I believe that right now, the, the market has determined the number of service stations on those three, on those three transportation corridors, and I think there may, we may even be at a saturation point in terms of service stations. And so I, I don't think that we can expect many more, but in, in the case where someone does want to locate a service station, I don't think that the city should prohibit it, simply because it's, it's too close to, to bus stop. And so I'm asking council to remove this language from the development code.
Councilmember, may I ask a clarifying question here? So you're saying, remove footnote twelve from service station under commercial use classifications in NMX, CMX, and RMX?
Yes. And, yes.
All right, we have, we don't have any questions. We have a motion, we have a second.
I have a second.
Everything that we discussed has already been seconded. Yeah, I was going to say, we, everything's been already seconded. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be talking about it if it hadn't. So it's been probably motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes four to two. Councilmembers Soria and Caprioli voting no. Councilmember Olivier, did you have any other emotions?
No, I didn't have a, I didn't have an amendment. I just wanted to talk.
All right, so we'll save your discussion for after, after when we get an amendment.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know if you really wanted the blah 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 award tonight, or if you're just kidding.
He wants to know if you want the blah 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 award. All right, Madam Clerk, what do we have next?
Let's see, the next thing that I show is by Capriolio, Councilmember Capriolio, and it's regarding the marijuana.
Well, I think, I think I'll help cap out here, because I think you just offered this because someone needed to, someone needed to do it, and I seconded it because we needed a second.
You made the motion.
Councilmember Capriolio, for discussion purposes. And I'm not sure I'm supportive of the motion, even though I seconded it, but, no, I, so, Councilmember Soria.
So, I believe we voted on this issue maybe a few months ago. Correct me if I'm wrong. No?
No, the, the current restriction on medical marijuana dispensaries has been on the books about eight years.
But on the issue in terms of marijuana dispensaries, or?
We've been discussing cultivation of marijuana recently. The.
But for medical purposes, correct?
Yes. This is not the cultivation ordinance. This is dispensaries and cooperatives.
Which are not allowed currently in the city?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, what would this ordinance, or this section do?
The existing ordinance says that medical marijuana dispensaries are essentially not allowed. Under the new development code, it simply maintains a list of things that are allowed, and that if it's not on that list, then it's not allowed. Medical marijuana dispensaries are not on the list. Nonetheless, we believe it'd be much easier to enforce in court if there was an express prohibition of medical marijuana dispensaries.
Okay.
So, the result is the same, but it'd be much more likely, we believe, to convince a court that they are not allowed if there's an express prohibition.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Capriolio.
So, the point of the story is that this conforms to federal state law and expedites the process.
It would continue the existing city ordinance that we've had on the books for about eight years. Yes.
Good, thank you.
All right, we have a motion.
Council President.
Yes.
I've got two very confused council members to my sides, or possibly it's me. So, I'm getting conflicting information. So, Doug, I'm going to ask you to clarify again. I thought I heard what I just heard, but I'm going to have to ask you again. What you're saying is, if we want to prohibit marijuana, clinical marijuana distribution centers in the city of Fresno, we need stronger language than what we currently have?
Than what we would have in the new development code.
What we have in this code to be adopted tonight.
That's correct.
So, we need stronger language than this if we want to withstand legal battles over our stance on medical marijuana.
Right, which is continuing the existing city policy.
Right, okay. Okay, all right, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Olivier.
It's just, it's just my observation that marijuana prohibition in the city of Fresno has obviously been a great success, because nobody in Fresno has any marijuana on them. Council colleagues, you can pass all the marijuana prohibition laws under the sun. People can still get pot in state prison. So, I suggest that this, this body take an open-minded and progressive approach to, to take another look at this issue, because repeating the policies of the past has been a complete failure. So, I think it's worth a wider discussion, simply because the, the prohibition of marijuana and marijuana growing doesn't, nobody that's about to plant marijuana thinks, gosh, this is illegal. Okay, I'm not going to do it. So, I think that we, we would be very progressive and forward-thinking to at least have a better discussion about marijuana use. I am a member of the Board of Directors of the League of California Cities, and the League of Cities believes that recreational use of marijuana will be on the statewide ballot in November of 2016. So, there's a chance that no matter what we do, it's just going to be legalized by the voters of the state of California a year from now. So, yeah, I just think that it's worth having a wider discussion, because the war on drugs has worked so well. Thank you.
Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you. Well, unless and until that occurs, I think we need to conform and comply with existing laws. We need to be consistent here, and just makes for better law enforcement, better public safety, and better for our city.
Councilmember Brand.
I concur. I think we need to enforce our existing laws. I think it's probably likely that the state will have on the ballot in 2016. I think the voters of Colorado may be having doubts about what they did a few years ago, that they're having the unintended consequences of dip fatalities and no way to measure, you know, people when they're driving recklessly, so, and anybody that's had children and has, knows about drugs, you know, they're all, in my opinion, you know, related. I understand there's a difference, but if the state law changes, then so be it, but I'm going to support our current ordinance.
All right, well, as most of you know, some time ago, we discussed this issue, and I'm obviously in conflict with our municipal code, is the way I feel about it, so I won't be supportive of the motion, although I did second it. And, well, imagine that, I know. Yes, I'm the most confused person up here. Well, no, I wanted to second it for discussion, but not buying me to support it. So, I, I think that we have, that is relatively clear in the city of Fresno, that we cannot allow dispensaries. I'm not exactly sure that we need to amend the development code to reinforce that, especially when I don't agree with our current code. So, with that, I will, you know, we'll vote electronically on this one, because I hear some dissenting views, so.
Can you repeat the motion, Council President? Or City Attorney?
The City Attorney probably has to repeat this motion.
I believe the motion would be to include the existing language concerning prohibition of medical marijuana dispensaries in, also in the new development code. Take the existing language, insert it in the new development code to make it clear that dispensaries are not allowed.
The item fails, three to three. Councilmembers Baines, Olivier, and Soria voting no. All right, what is our next motion, Madam Clerk?
The next motion is your motion regarding with Section 15402E2 regarding non-residential districts.
All right, this is my motion, and I passed out a handout of that. And what this does, colleagues, is this simply says that if there is a legal non-conforming use after five years, that they will have, that the property owner will have 30, 90 days only to find another legal non-conforming use. If after 90 days, they don't have, they can't find a use that's legally non-conforming, then the next use has to be conforming.
So, when we have a, and can we begin a discussion of legal non-conforming here that might go a little bit beyond your motion, or, because that's one thing that I kind of wanted to discuss, and I, and I.
We can, but I just wanted to be clear that my motion is very, very narrow in the sense of it's only with legal non-conformings, and it's only when they abandon it. So, we're not talking about the full legal non, so we can certainly go as broad as you like, but just to.
Legal non-conforming.
Right. And what a legal non-conforming use would be, would be a use that was existing before we changed the zoning to make it illegal, or, I'm sorry, to make it non-conforming.
Yeah.
Right.
So, we changed the zoning, it makes it non-conforming, but it's still legal, because it was existing.
Right.
And you're saying, once it ceases to exist for 90 days, it has to shift to the next conforming use?
Right, after 90 days, after 90 days, the next use has to conform to the land use policy.
Now, and this is where I asked you earlier, this is citywide?
Citywide.
May I, Council President?
I'm sorry, and it's only, it would only be for.
Non-residential.
Non-residential districts.
Non-residential what?
Non-residential land uses.
Okay, non-residential land uses, but this is, are you trying, let me ask you a question. Is your motive to take care of a certain area of town?
Well, no. I mean, well, yeah, obviously, everything that I do, I don't, I would, I have my district in mind, per se, but I actually think that this is just good city policy. I think that throughout the city, that there are, there are probably instances where there are legal non-conforming uses, that once they go away, that the new use that we've set upon that community, the community should get the new legal use.
Uh huh, uh huh, okay. So, we couldn't correct it by making it part of a specific plan? You want to make it citywide?
No, yeah, and I'm, and, no, you, you, you could not correct this. This language would not work in a specific plan, no.
Okay, okay. All right, then, Jennifer, I'm going to have to ask you a couple of questions about legal non-conforming, and they're really questions that you and I went over yesterday.
Okay.
But I think the public would be interested here, and I, and I probably need clarification again. So, legal non-conforming, if there's a long, I'm just going to throw out hypotheticals, and they might even, they might not even be great analogies, and you might choose, tell me that they're not, doesn't really fit what I'm trying to say, but say somebody has a tattoo parlor on Blackstone, and we don't want them to have a tattoo parlor, we want them to have a crepe shop, a crepery. Okay, now. Yeah, so, so, if that tattoo parlor owner calls it quits for 90 days and shuts down the shop, whatever reason, maybe he has a financial collapse or an emergency, shuts down the shop for 90 days, but then he says, you know what, I've got a loan from my uncle, I'm going to reopen my tattoo parlor on Blackstone. He would, would this prohibit him from doing that, and for, and we would go to him and say, hey buddy, we need a crepery there, or nothing? Now, I'm oversimplifying, but is that, is that what this measure, is that the type of thing this measure would do?
Well, there would be several tests to determine whether or not they ceased operation. Did they turn off their utilities? Did they turn in or revoke their business licenses to determine whether or not they had actually ceased operations?
Okay, but let's just say they did.
Okay.
I mean, to make it easy, let's say that they, they did.
So, under this provision, it is a non-residential use, so after 90 days, they would need to come into conformance with the code. They would need to pick a, any land use from the table that was a permitted land use.
Okay, so, so what you're saying there is, they'd have a lot more options than just a crepery.
Correct.
But they couldn't go back to the non-conforming use once we pass this development code?
If, if this.
And the zoning.
If this amendment, yes, that would be correct.
That's right, yeah, 90 days comes and goes like that. So, I'm really worried about some of our business owners.
But it wouldn't be the business owner. It's the, so the business would have closed, Councilmember. So, the business, this only, this is only when a business closes. So, when you close and you move someplace else, the new business has to, after 90 days, has to conform to the land use. So, it's not, it's not the.
As a small business owner, the small business and the owner are the same. You know, it's very, it could be very damp.
Yeah, but this is only, this really only, so, let me, let me see if I can clear, clear it up for you. I see you struggling with this. This would be when a business owner leaves a property. The property owner then is still there, which is true. A new business that would come to that property owner after 90 days would need to conform to the land use.
What if the business owner is the property owner?
Well, then, if he shut his, if he or she shut their business down and moved someplace else, then this wouldn't.
Well, it's not about, what I'm asking, Council President, is not about moving somewhere else.
But that's what this is only about. This is, that's what I'm trying to tell you. This is, this is about when the business shuts down and it vacates, the property owner, if the property owner is the business owner and they take their business elsewhere, that's a different scenario. But for this property owner that still has that property, when the business shuts down, that's a, that's a non-conforming use, a legal non-conforming use, right? So, you talked about the tattoo parlor. The tattoo parlor's there, he's, you know, he or she's maybe leasing their place from me or you, right, where we still own that property.
Okay.
We're saying that the property owner, that the new use has to conform after 90 days. So, yeah, if they can't find another tattoo parlor that just wants to pop in there 90 days, then the next person that comes in there, the next business that comes in there, just has to conform to the code.
Okay. Jennifer, yesterday, we were discussing questions along these lines, and some other similar questions, but I'm going to try and stay locked in here, and I'm going to come back to those in a minute. But if a, if a business owner is in a long-term lease with a property owner, and for a tattoo parlor, but they don't make it, they can't make it, they're in a long-term lease, can they, can they sublet out that business to another tattoo parlor?
So, in terms of land use, as long as the land use is in continuous operation and hasn't been abandoned, the answer would be yes. In terms of the, the legal lease agreement, I can't speak to that, but in terms of the land use, if you're, you own the, the business, and you choose to let your friend run it, or let somebody else run it, it's still in continuous operation. You could sell the business to a relative or to someone else, you could hand it down if you're retiring to your, to your child or your spouse, as long as the use, the business, continues to operate, it can operate under the.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity.
Okay, okay. Council President, I have some other questions about non-conforming land uses. Do you want me to talk about that now, or do you want to take a vote, and then?
I mean, it's up to you. I just wanted to be clear that this is a pretty narrow issue. This is when a business vacates, and it's, and so, I mean, I don't know what your non-conforming use questions are. We can certainly, I would certainly be happy to talk about them, since it is under legal non-conforming, but I just want to make sure we don't co-mingle the issue too much, because this is kind of very specific, when a business that is a legal non-conforming business leaves and closes, then the new business that comes in after 90 days just can't, it can't, it has to conform. So, it's a pretty narrow, pretty narrow thing. It's not really, not really broad. The legal non-conforming business can stay there however long they choose, but if they close and go someplace else, the property owner just has to make sure that the new business conforms to the land use policy. So, like I said, it's, I'd be happy to talk about the other, if you think it.
Okay, let me ask a couple of other questions, although I'm pretty dialed in on what you're trying to do here. Jennifer, during, for the course of the conversation on the development code with legal non-conforming, I've had a series of questions come up, and some of them I asked you, but I want to, I want to put them on the record, and so that other citizens can hear them as well. So, say somebody has a legal non-conforming use, and, and they, they run across a catastrophe like a fire, and the fire burns more than 50% of the property, now they've got to deal with their insurance. Does the city of Fresno tell them, we had a fire at that property, you can no longer, you can't open up a tattoo parlor there again? Your property's destroyed, now you have to open up something else?
Section 15405 of the legal. Section 15405 of the legal nonconforming section, or, excuse me, of the nonconforming section of the code, item F talks about replacement of involuntarily destroyed or damaged nonconforming structures or site features, and it allows for the structure to be rebuilt, as long as it is rebuilt within one year after destruction, and it must, you must pull building permits, obviously, so.
Okay, you built, building permits, can the, can the building be built exactly the way it was?
Correct. To be replaced or reconstructed to the same size and extent as before the damage occurred.
Okay, so, we, so somebody that's got, their building is setback, or their front door is setback, and that burns down in a tragedy, they don't have to rebuild with the front door out at the sidewalk, or some preferred building?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then, if somebody has a tattoo parlor, and we don't any longer, the city of Fresno no longer wants a tattoo parlor there, but they could pass that tattoo parlor, but they don't have a break in their business, they can pass that tattoo parlor on to their children, or another, another, another tattoo parlor owner, they could sell it and say, as long as it stays a tattoo parlor, it can stay one indefinitely?
Yes, the legal nonconforming use can continue indefinitely, as long as it continues to operate under the rules that it was established under. So, if it had rules that were given to it through a conditional use permit, as long as they comply with those rules, it can continue indefinitely.
And then, say they have a real small tattoo parlor, but they want to add another, another chair, do they, can they expand that business? Can they expand the building?
So, those are actually two questions.
Right.
One is the expansion of the use, and one is the expansion of the structure, but in terms of the expansion of the use, again, in the same chapter, under section 15404B, expansion of legal nonconforming uses, it states that a legal and nonconforming use shall not be expanded unless a conditional use permit is granted for that expansion. So, they could expand, but they need to get a conditional use permit for that expansion. Typically, that would be taking over, say, another, if it was a multi-tenant commercial structure, they would be taking over another tenant space.
I see.
They were in one, now they're in two spaces, so they've expanded in size, and then there are certain findings that must be made. The resultant use and project design will reduce current adverse impacts on adjacent properties and/or the general public, the resultant use and/or project design will aid in the preservation of a historic resource, or the expansion of the use or enlargement of a structure housing a nonconforming use is necessary to comply with a requirement imposed by law for the operation of that particular use, including but not limited to regulations for disabled access or seismic retrofit. So, if you were required to put in an ADA ramp to your business, that would be allowed under the expansion of the legal nonconforming use.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
Uh huh.
And Jared Gordon, can you come up to the microphone just for a second, please? Because you had sent me an email that I really didn't really receive in time to review properly. You have some concerns about legal nonconforming uses. Could you express those to me and break them down for me?
I do, and, and actually, just as to the very specific point that Ms. Clark was just discussing, in terms of the findings that are required for a CUP for expansion of a legal nonconforming use, my concern is that there's no particularly good policy reason to limit expansion of legal nonconforming uses to those three things, and only those three things. I think it makes sense for there to simply be a conditional use permit that permits expansion of legal nonconforming uses, and if it makes economic sense to do that, if it's something that otherwise benefits the community, there's no particularly good reason why, those are the only three possible things. In addition to that, I'll note that the way in which that is written, those three tests and the finding that's associated with it is both unique, and I think has a small chance of triggering a sequo obligation, that I think probably no one on this council intends. We don't particularly need to have an additional finding obligation that creates, secret triggers in the wrong circumstances for an expansion of a legal nonconforming use, and I think if we leave it at a CUP, that is, you know, consistent with essentially every other policy decision that's generally made on allowing, you know, sort of outside use cases within the development code.
So, in your mind, if that legal nonconforming wants to expand, but we would require a CUP, and you're in agreement or disagreement with that?
I, I think a CUP is fine, what I'm suggesting is that we should eliminate
The conditions.
Yes, all the conditions and the, the finding that has to go along with that.
So that, Jennifer, so that we, business, a legal nonconforming could expand for any reason without those conditions, your thoughts on that?
Well, there were specific reasons that we crafted the, the tests, because typically we have to have findings for a conditional use permit, so what would be the rationale for us to say, we're going to expand a use that the development code does not permit? Because usually, you have to make a finding that it's in conformance with the development code and the general plan, so if you're allowing a use that's not in conformance with the general plan or the development code to expand, you really need to have alternative findings in the code to allow for that conditional use to be approved by the city council and/or
But those findings be like, an increase of, increase in employment? Is that a valid finding, or?
On, in terms of the validity of findings, I would defer to the city attorney, what types of findings are typically
And before we get there, Councilmember Brandell, I want to just kind of say that I know that we're a lot broader than my motion on, right, right at this moment.
Yeah, I got your motion dialed in, though.
Okay.
And I'm almost done.
Okay, okay, cool, because I got a couple of other council members, too, that wanted to say some.
May I ask a clarification? What, are there alternative findings that are being proposed?
He's asking, what would be examples of alternative findings, and would employment, would additional employment be one of them?
Somebody wanted to expand through a CUP, they're willing to do, go through the CUP, but they want to expand, but it's not one of the couple of conditions that we currently allow, but they, they're, we're gonna add jobs to our city, is that a valid reason to allow them to proceed?
That could be, if it is the will of the council, to add that as one of the findings.
Okay, that could be
Councilmember, can I suggest one other point, specific to the sub 1, the adverse impacts finding that's proposed as part of the development code? The way that I read that, at the very least, is that reduction of current adverse impacts does not mean that it, it doesn't reduce adverse impacts on the city, that are different adverse impacts, and I, I think the way that that test, at the very least, is written, does not necessarily result in a net gain to the city if that particular finding is met. So, for example, using the tattoo parlor as kind of the same hypothetical, you could have a situation in which it changes to an auto body shop, which has totally different adverse impacts, but they reduce the adverse impacts of having a tattoo shop 100%, right? Because you've eliminated that use. So, at least the way that that finding is constructed, it does not, I think, accomplish probably what the city staff intended it to, at least as I read it.
Jennifer, you wanted to say something?
I was, I was going to say that the required findings for a conditional use permit do require that the, the review authority, whether it's the planning department, or the planning commission, or the city council, determine that the proposed use is allowable within the zoning district, and is, complies with all the provisions of this code, that it's consistent with the general plan, that it will not substantially be adverse to public health, safety, and welfare, design, location, and size are compatible with existing and reasonably foreseeable future land uses in the vicinity, and the site is physically suitable for the type, density, intensity of the use being proposed. So, those are standard findings for a conditional use permit, obviously, the expansion of a legal nonconforming use could not meet those findings, so we established findings that would allow flexibility for the review authority to determine, is this use going to benefit the neighborhood? So, is this particular business, by taking over that next-door shop, is it going to add jobs? That might be a benefit, that you could choose to say that was your finding, or it might take over a space that has had problems in the past, so therefore, it would be benefiting the community. So, that, that finding gives more flexibility than, than the standard CUP findings, so it really gives some, more flexibility to the review authority for determining expansion of a, of a legal nonconforming use.
And, and, that's what our, that's what this
That's what we're proposing.
Is an
Is more flexible
More flexibility.
Than what
Previously existed.
Well, then, then if we struck those three potential findings, we struck those and just said it had to get a CUP, these other six findings, or five findings would need to be met, and they couldn't be met.
Is there any way to visit this again? This is pretty intense and detailed conversation, is there any way to visit this again, or is that, would that have to be dealt with tonight?
No, we can revisit this again.
What's that?
We can revisit it.
In what, in what way, Council President?
Well, we could discuss a number of ways, council member, if you had a specific section in the development code with legal nonconforming, we could do a text amendment, we could, if we wanted to do some more research, we could ask the development, the DARM to do a workshop along with, maybe some proposed language, to get to, to get to kind of where you're driving, but there are a number of ways we can, we can get there, if you don't have it all figured out tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jared. I probably were gonna, I'll probably meet with Jared, and then I have a couple of other people that have real similar questions, might have to come back that other route. But Jennifer, I did want to say that one of the things that I've heard worries about with this new development code, is that people out there in city, in the city of Fresno that are operating businesses, they don't, they don't know we're meeting tonight, they don't know that the ground is gonna shift under their feet, they don't know that they have 90 days, only if something comes up, they don't know a lot of that stuff, and we can say, well, they should know, but the truth is, many of them don't know, and, and I've, and I'm gonna have, I have a problem knowing that they don't know, and so, how can we make our new code as flexible and transitional for these people in the next couple of years, that they go, what do you mean, a crepery?
On this one, council member, I, there's a, there's five years.
Five years?
Yeah, I don't know if you took a look at the text, but I
Hit me with it, Council President, five years for what?
For them, for, this doesn't even go into effect for five years.
I love it already, that's a great improvement, Jennifer. Okay, so, so this doesn't go in, in for five years?
Councilmember, Council President Baines' motion was that, for the first five years, it would be as F2 is written, abandonment of legal nonconforming uses, for, you can be abandoned for up to one year, after one year, you lose your legal nonconforming use status. Councilmember is, is requesting a change that after five years, to add that it would become 90 days. So, give the market time to catch up, to understand what the rules
Is that five years, so is that, so I get that, but is that five years cover all these other situations that, that, that
No, this is only about this.
Right.
Right, so like I said, my, my situation's narrow, and that's why I built in a five-year grace period, so to speak, so that no one's gonna wake up tomorrow morning and have to do this, but after five years
All right, I'd be interested to hear what other council members have to say about nonconforming uses, and some of the situations that we're gonna incur out there in the public, but I do get yours, so I appreciate that, thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Brandell.
You know, the, the first question on this transition is, how many businesses are nonconforming, because I think, correct me, Jennifer, a lot of, the way the code is written, is pretty broad in this application, in terms of the types of, you know, commercial, retail, residential, so, can you estimate in this, and everybody always is focusing along Blackstone, but really, this is citywide ordinance, so we're talking about, in Councilmember Baines' district, I know there are a lot of eyesores, things that irrespective of this development code, you'd like to shut down, because they are really not contributing to the community. So, is there any estimate on how many people are gonna end up in the nonconforming category, or, or is it mainly focused along Blackstone?
No, I would say that this code is much more liberal than our current development code, than our current zoning ordinance, and currently, there are many more structures in particular, and businesses, that are nonconforming under our existing code than there will be under the new code. The new code actually expands the uses that can be allowed within the city, and it allows for perpetuity of those uses, as long as they are maintained within, in conformance with the, with the rules under which they were adopted. So, in terms of an actual number, I couldn't tell you, I can tell you that all wood-framed structures within the city of Fresno are currently legally nonconforming, so, this code will take away that provision, so we will actually have fewer nonconforming structures than we currently have.
So, the point is, currently, under existing code, there are more properties that are nonconforming than there will be, once this code is passed, that number's gonna drop substantially.
Correct.
Okay, and even certain businesses that you think may not, using a tattoo parlor, may still be applicable within the existing code, and I think if you look at areas of town, I used the example before, there are some businesses out there that are absolutely, absolutely blights, you know, and, 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 I've, there was a, where was the city, Bruce, where was the, the one out in Clovis Avenue, the storage facility? That was basically a fire waiting to happen?
Oh.
Okay, right, so there are, this, that's the focus on this still, and I think you missed, it's five years before this thing even kicks in, and I think which is a pretty good transition, and also the distinction between property owners and tenants, a lot of these, these businesses are owned by, and they could, they could be a single tenant, you know, an auto shop, or it could be a multiple of tenants, so you're talking about two different things, tenants and owners, so, if a tenant of, of an owner decides to leave, the owner's gotta make a decision, he wants to market the property, I think the way the code is, it allows a variety of alternatives, but basically, if you're nonconforming use anywhere in the city, and this was a family operation that started 100 years ago, you can continue to operate that in perpetuity, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you can sell it 100 times, and each succeeding owner has those same vested rights, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Brandell brought out the illustrations of, if there is a fire, it's replaced, it can be rebuilt, as it is, subject to any code upgrades, correct?
Correct.
Okay, using the smart and final example, if you had a business that was back 100 feet, it burnt down, it doesn't come up five feet, it goes in the same footprint that was there before, okay? So, I think, within this city, we have to look at citywide, there's gotta be a balance between, you want to protect the businesses, but you also want to protect the public and other businesses, because when you have a rundown, blighted, abandoned business, you're not only affecting the city, you're affecting the adjoining business, was adversely affected by the operation, and I have seen some of these businesses in Councilmember Baines' district, and I, I support what he's trying to do, and it's never, is we're going through an unravelling, a development code that was done in 1962, and thousands and thousands of transactions, it's impossible not to have a, you know, so, these transitional problems. I think we're trying to go in an intelligent, comprehensive way, and I appreciate Mr. Gordon's comments, that we have to find ways to protect existing businesses, but at the same time, we've got to move on as a city, so, I'm supportive of Mr. Councilman Baines' amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Olivier.
Okay, I've been following this, and tattoo parlors, and crepe shops, and all this stuff, and I, I want to make sure that I understand this correctly, Councilmember, or Council President Baines, like you, my district is, is, is older, because it was built first as our city grew, and so we have a, a number of places that could really use to be cleaned up and revitalized. We have areas of high concentrated poverty in my part of town, just as you do, so I want you to know first, before I ask you a few questions, that I, I am in solidarity with you in terms of removing blight and cleaning up neighborhoods, the, I think I have a problem with this, and I, I want you to help me understand it, in case I'm, I've got it wrong. Okay. This This goes into effect in five years. After that five year, okay, so once, let's say, what is this, 2015? So it's gonna, if this passes tonight, it's going to go into effect in November of 2020. Once that occurs, anything that's legal nonconforming. So on Blackstone, we have an old fast food joint that's, that's boarded up. There's one just south of Clinton on Blackstone that's been boarded up for a long time and it's going to now be a laundromat. And the person is in there cleaning it up, fixing it up, they're getting ready to open up as a laundromat. Really nice facility, okay. So once this goes into effect, okay, but that building is, when we vote tonight, will become legal nonconforming. So if that thing shudders, again, let's say the, the laundromat goes out of business and in 2020, it goes out of business. It's closed for one year and another business owner wants to come in and open up a taco restaurant. That business owner has to bring that facility into compliance.
Is the taco restaurant a conforming use?
The thing, this is the challenge of this discussion. If I could, if I could jump in real quick and clarify for you, Councilmember Olivier. So, so there's two different issues, the structure, the building itself, and then the use. The reality is, we've made this new code so flexible in commercial and mixed-use areas where we're talking about the small businesses we're all concerned about, that it's very difficult to think of a use that is, that is not permitted. What's there today? If you're going from a taco shop to a laundromat, a tattoo shop to a crepe, you know, a massage parlor to a, there are so many things that are allowed, we've essentially allowed everything and added things to commercial and mixed-use districts. The building itself, the structure, can exist in perpetuity. It can exist forever. If it burns down, you can build it back, the way it was originally permitted. So think of it in two ways. The structure itself, there's, there's been an issue raised about expanding a structure. Should it just be a CUP or should there be additional conditions? That, set that aside. The use, the, the use itself, though, that's so flexible, that it's honestly, it's hard to imagine what, what would be excluded if I'm, and remember, we're talking about abandoned businesses. Abandoned, walked away.
Well, no, I mean, but the, it seems to me there would be unintended consequences if we pass this, where there would be something that's, it's not abandoned, it may be in probate, maybe somebody died, but for whatever reason...
But this only applies if it's abandoned.
So, and how, where, I wanna know what the language is to determine if it's abandoned.
Well, let me, let me try, let me try the, the best I can to say this. This only applies to a business that is a legal nonconforming business that shuts down. This is not for a new business. There is nowhere, so I'm not, and I'm trying to wrap my hand around why, why, why it may be more controversial for, for me than I think, but after a legal nonconforming business closes, and that is defined in the, in the code, it's, there's a definition for closes, like...
Right, and I heard, I heard that.
Okay, so let's just, for a moment, if we just kinda do that, it's closed. The next business that comes in there has to conform. That's really what we're saying. You, you, you can't, after 90 days...
The use of it or the structure?
Use, we're talking about the use right now.
So what, you're, I'm just, I mean, I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain around it, too.
Yeah, and let me see if I can help you. Like, what's the, what's the hardest part to, if, the use? We're talking about taco shops versus crepe shops or tattoo parlors? We're talking, we're not talking about the structure, we're talking about the...
Dust reels and kind of...
Well, I'm trying to figure out how this would, how this would relate to Blackstone business. And stuff sometimes, inventory takes a long time to move on Blackstone.
But it's only...
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna punish folks who, for whatever reason, are tied up and they can't open it.
So that's one of the reasons why you have five years, specifically for Blackstone, by the way. So one of the reasons that I initially wanted this to be immediate, but we talked about Blackstone and all of the efforts around Blackstone, and so there's a five-year period in here where this does not go into effect because of Blackstone, to make sure that Blackstone business owners would have the proper transition period. But after that time, Councilmember Olivier, you know, the truth of the matter is, if you went out somewhere right now and you wanted to open up a business on Blackstone, you would have to conform to whatever the code was. You, you, if you wanted to open up a business, you would have to conform. You would have to, you, you could not put, you know, a tattoo parlor next to a house, right? You couldn't do it. It doesn't work like that.
We do have that.
Well, but you really can't do that right now. So what this will do ultimately, what this will do, what this will...
By right on Blackstone.
What this will do ultimately is simply say that the next business, after one closes, has to conform, like every other business in the city. There's no, it's, you, it just, it has to conform.
I just can't, Director Clark, or can, can you give me an example, like a, or a practical example of, of what you're talking about, so I can understand it better?
So let me, let me, let me try.
Okay.
You have a, you have a, an auto body shop that goes out of business and it's, and it's legal nonconforming. The next business that comes in there...
After 90 days? So 90 days?
After, five years later and then 90 days, would, would have to conform. But that's only after that business closes. That business could stay there as long as they want, they can sell it to whomever they want. It can stay there in perpetuity forever. But at some point, when the business closes down, only when the business closes down, the next business that comes in there has to conform.
So Director Clark, what, what would it have to be? It could no longer remain a garage?
It could be whatever, as long as it conforms. I mean, it, remember, it just has to, it has to conform. So if you, whatever zone you think, it just has to conform.
Okay. All right, I, I think I understand it better. And, and while I'm, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, I understand what the people who wrote this are trying to accomplish, but in terms of, I think we're going to see a lot of unforeseen consequences of this and they, I don't think that they would be positive. I'm, I'm concerned that the 90, I mean, people don't know about, aren't gonna know about this tomorrow and people aren't gonna know about this five years from now. I mean, let's face it, people are, in my mind, people are very busy and they're always surprised by the things that we, that we do here. And so I think that, that the 90 days, I think, you know, a, a major selling point for this document to me has, has been that, that small businesses, mom and pops, minority-owned businesses, southern businesses have, have, that are allowed to be legal nonconforming in perpetuity. And I think if, if, if a family tragedy occurs or something where it's shuttered for 90 days and the city finds that it's, and the city finds that it's abandoned, I think that, I think the period of time is too punitive and I think this could, I think this could have some, some serious adverse effects for business. And like I said, I know what you're trying to do and I, I appreciate that and I applaud that, but I, I do see this having adverse effects for business. And I think that this, this kind of flies in the face of the reasons why I like this document and why I'll be voting for it tonight. So respectfully, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on your amendment, but I do, I do appreciate the work that you've put into doing it. I just, I'm afraid of unforeseen consequences and, and adverse effects on, on local business, especially small business, because they, they absolutely, they need every dollar. And if, if they have to, and if you're talking about getting a site reopened in, in a real meaningful way, a positive way where people can do business, this might be too punitive and, and a small business person who's looking to get started may not be able to bring that facility into compliance. So I would rather see it just opened up again where business is being done. So again, friendly, a friendly no, but I think it would be, I think it'd be bad.
And, and Councilmember Olivier, it's, it's clear to me you probably don't quite understand this and it's okay, because you don't, haven't given me an example of anything that could happen adversely. And if the only thing that we're gonna do is be worried about something that we can't think about adversely, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't vote for anything. So this really, in my opinion, addresses every concern that you brought up and Councilmember Brandal as well, there, and we don't know what's gonna happen, but we don't know what's gonna happen with anything, quite frankly, ever. But we tried to structure this in a way to where we know for sure that it would not adversely affect, as we see it now, businesses. But I understand that...
It's, it's not because I don't understand it. This is how I understand it and I...
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bruce Redd. Oh. All right. We'll now just call for the question. So we'll take an electronic vote, sounds like this may be controversial. So all those voting in favor say yes and all those voting no, don't know. All right, the amendment passes five to one with Councilmember Olivier voting no and Councilmember Quintero absent. All right, Madam Clerk, does that take care of all of our amendments?
Soria, did you want to update this or something?
Yes, it doesn't change really the intent behind it, but just wanted to make sure that I had the clarifying language. So I passed it out to everyone in terms of the condo conversion. So if there's a consensus, if I can replace, if not, I'd be happy to take another vote.
So you want to replace...
Just add that language.
Councilmember Brand, Brandal, you're, oh, you're, you're up.
Yeah.
Quick. I've got 20 minutes before that happens. Jennifer, I wanna go back real quick to the by right construction of projects and, and then noticing of the neighbors.
Oh, Council, I'm sorry, I thought you were commenting on Councilmember Soria's motion. I'm sorry, you, you're, you're talking about a different topic.
Oh, man, I, I'm moving at light speed.
No, you are. Well, we, well, before, before we move to that, we, we just, you've gotta deal with her, with her motion.
All right, I support Councilmember Soria.
I'm sorry, I thought you, I thought you punched up for her item. Okay. So Councilmember Soria, you want to amend your motion and add the language demonstrating compliance with required location assistance?
Yes. So if there's a consensus, if we can replace the vote, otherwise we, I'd be happy to take an additional vote.
We have any objections to that?
Any objections?
Okay. Done by consensus. Councilmember Brandal. Okay, but before we move to that, let me set the stage for where we're going to next. So Councilmembers, at this point, we, did you punch up again?
Yeah.
Okay. At this point, Councilmembers, we have gone through all of the amendments and now we can come, we've come to the part where we can, there are other items that we wanted to have discussions on. So I know that Councilmember Brandal has one, I know for sure, Councilmember Baines, Soria. So we can now have general discussions. They may, they may lead to amendments, just to be clear. We're still allowed to make amendments, but if it, if it evolves out of the discussion. Once we are done with the discussion and any resulting amendments, we will then be voting on the full Development Code with all of the amendments attached. And that will be the final action of the night. So it...
Is this gonna result in a filibuster or, or what?
Well, I certainly hope not. If we've been here this long and it's filibuster, we, we, we're doing something wrong. But, so anyhow, just to let everybody know where we're at, we're now discussing overall, overall issues and they may lead to amendments. Councilmember Brandal, the floor is yours.
Jennifer, residential, by right construction of a multifamily, two or three-story apartment complex inside of a residential neighborhood, do we have, currently, if we pass this tonight as written, do we have to notice any of those neighbors?
So in the current code, if a property is zoned for multifamily use, okay? So in the proposed code, a, a property that is zoned for multifamily use, there are certain uses that can be constructed by right without notification. And those are in multi, they're all listed in residential multifamily, all of the Ps that are listed, which would include a multi-unit residential building or a, or a multifamily structure. Okay? So that would be permitted. But if you were zoned, single-family, medium density, and you wanted to build a multifamily unit, you would have to get a conditional use permit.
Because you're changing, okay.
Well, it, it is allowed, but with conditional use permit.
And then the minute you have to get a conditional use permit, you have to notify neighbors.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I need some people, and Mayor, I do need some people to hear this.
Right.
Although we've talked, but other people want to hear this.
So if it's a single-family parcel zoned RS5, which is our medium-density, single-family property, you could build a duplex or a multi-unit residential building. However, it would require a conditional use permit, which requires noticing.
And just, and just to clarify, only in the highest-density, single-family zone district. So in the lower-density, single-family zone districts, which is most of the, the built community, the multifamily structures are not allowed, even with a CUP.
Okay. I, I would add that over the course of time that I've been involved, sometimes at these community meetings, you know, so it'd be interesting to me, sometimes at these community meetings, the citizens come up with really great little improvements to the actual project. You'd be surprised. I mean, I think a lot of people would be surprised, but sometimes the citizens come up with a great idea, like shading lights that would hit households. And so I've heard all kinds of cool things that come out of those, the citizens being allowed to be informed about what's happening in their neighborhood. And it's not always that they're against the project, but they wanna make sure it's a quality project that's going in. And so, you know, so I'm, I'm supportive of, of, of this by right construction because that will really speed up construction in Fresno and projects in Fresno, which we've had a bad reputation for. So I think that's fantastic. You know, and then you've, you've also confirmed that in most cases, especially the ones you and I have discussed, which really center around District Two, you can't just come in and throw in a, a three-story, multifamily project in the middle of single-story residential without a CUP, which would then trigger the opportunity for citizens to note, to know about that project and to come and make comment on it. And so has that, has that also gone up to 1,000 feet of noticing?
Yes.
Okay.
All discretionary permits, conditional use permit, rezone and plan amendment would all require the 1,000-foot noticing.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. So I have just a couple of questions that are in Section 5-9, on, in that table, 154907 regarding planning permits and actions. Just had a question in regards to the public notice. For me, in terms of notices, is extremely important. So I wanted to understand why previously, under the development permit, we had a requirement for public notice and we've deleted that?
So, so the, currently, we have a provision for site plan review, which is a, a review of the proposed development plan. So even a, a by right use would require a site plan review. And we do notice site plan reviews to specific, to, to specific agencies and to, we route to specific cognizant agencies. So in the development permit, the, the development permit is specifically for by right uses and would allow for a by right use to be, to be built with a development permit. So there would, it would go, it would get routed to all of our cognizant agencies, including as the council member requested, the council district offices would all still be noticed when a development permit was requested. We would route to the agencies. We have very specific... We have very specific criteria. The code was built with very specific criteria under which you can review and provide that permit. And then all discretionary permits, just as they are currently, would still require routing.
Why did we eliminate public notice?
Someone, under what conditions is a site plan review?
I would propose we change it back to the original guideline, which you guys had as yes.
Excuse me, I'm not sure I understand the question.
So there's, in the chart, you guys went from a yes to a no. So I'd rather go back to the original, in terms of public notice. On the development proposals, it's on Table 1549-4907.
Right. So currently, today, we do not notice site plan review. Does that answer the question?
No.
Okay.
So you guys went from a yes to a no. I want to know why that change was made. I would rather have the yes. I, I'm for public notice.
I think I can probably help with that. So, so we, we, so site plan review is now called development permit. So it's the same thing, so we're just continuing the same practice. So today, we don't notice on site plan review.
But why did we originally have a yes?
I don't know. That's why it was changed, because it seemed to be an oversight.
So currently, we don't provide-
Currently, site plan review only goes to the council offices, which is what the count, and our routing agencies, which is what the council president has requested continue, that that practice continue for development permits. That practice would continue. The table, originally, I don't know why it said yes, development permit would be noticed for public notice, but it's not something that we currently do.
I guess, and then my similar question to the page V-30, under Section 15-5205, under public notice, is that related to the same, to the same section? It's just referencing back to the chart or?
Right. So it's just repeating and carrying over the current site plan review requirement. So public notice shall not be required for a development permit, with the exception of the two development permits that the council member has requested be added for public notice. And it's just a courtesy notice that a, that a development permit has been approved.
Those were my two questions. But if you say that we don't do, I guess, in terms of the development permit, we're being consistent, then I was just wondering why we had a yes, and then we went from yes to no.
It was in the original draft, and so when it was, when it was corrected, it shows up as a red line in this draft.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier.
Has Member Soria's comments wrapped up on that one?
Yes.
Okay. My topic was just what I was working with a constituent about, and the planning department knows what I was talking about, and Director Clark knows about it, too. Talk about, the code discusses, well, maybe, maybe we could have somebody from planning actually read the part, the one about the cigar smoke, the anything smoke, the tobacco smoke.
So the council member had a specific question that related to hours of operation for establishments that have smoke, hookah, or cigar lounges. These are specifically found in the outdoor dining and patio areas. So eating and drinking establishments, including bars, nightclubs, and smoking establishments with outdoor dining and patio areas shall be located, developed, and operated in compliance with the following standards. And it includes a table that would includes hours of operation. And there is a listing related to distance from residential districts. So smoke, hookah, and cigar lounges that are located within 250 feet of residential districts cannot open earlier than 7:00 a.m. or operate later than 12:00 p.m., and that would be midnight, specifically as it relates to outdoor dining activity or outdoor patios. Establishments that are further than 250 feet from residential districts have no limitations.
If you could help me understand the genesis of this item, does the city receive many complaints from residents who live within 250 feet of cigar-smoking establishments? Or where was this, was this clipped and pasted from a different municipality? Or how did this end up in there?
We, we actually have greatly expanded the outdoor dining section. As you recall, about a year and a half ago, we adopted an outdoor dining policy, which we previously did not have. So this actually expands upon the allowances within our existing code, and it allows it by right without a CUP under these specific conditions. So it actually expands our current, our current code and the, and the uses. And it mirrors the same uses as for establishments that serve alcohol, just because outdoors typically has a noise factor as it relates to residential. So the closer it is to residential, the more potential conflict that you have with noise.
So if the cigar establishment, if, if they're not outside on the patio, they can stay open as late as they want to smoke cigars in, inside?
This is specifically related to outdoor dining and patio areas. It does not reference the indoor portion of the establishment.
So does this have to do with the hours of the establishment or just the hours of the tobacco use at the establishment? So could the restaurants stay open until 2:00 in the morning, and they would have to stop smoking at midnight?
It's just for the patio. It's the hours of operation for the patio itself.
Okay. Do you have anyone else punched up, Council President? You do. Okay, let me ruminate on this for a second, and maybe, maybe we'll come back to me. I think that this is, if there, if there haven't been a number of, if there haven't been any complaints received, I, I think that, and in my opinion, this is punitive, and I, in my opinion, this is, I, I think it, I think it discourages the kind of, the kind of activity that we're trying to encourage with, with outdoor dining. So I'm interested, if someone else feels like commenting on this, I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Brand.
Okay, I'm going to start moving about nine o'clock towards a conclusion. So I'm going to keep my comments focused on the entire picture, not discuss any more specific changes. This, and I've spent a lot of time, and particularly the last, God, the last three or four weeks, I think I've been a marathon of negotiations and meetings and discussions. I want to thank the mayor and her staff, and BIA, and other stakeholders that we've met, and other, to try to find solutions, and it's been an exhaustive process. But, you know, what's, what's the end result? And the end result is approximately 35% to 40% of the CUP requirements are going to be dropped by the passages planned. What this means, it means business-friendly, save money, save time. Going through a CU process, CUP process is very expensive and very timely. So we're trying to find a way to make it less cumbersome. Since this initial draft was received, I think, was it back in March? Is that right? March or April? Then over 1,000 amendments, about roughly 85% of this document has been changed. And I know initially, I drew some conclusions based on comments I heard, and there's a lot of stuff that has been changed. And I've been part of the process that's been improving and making these things, this final document, right. And again, there's never going to be anything perfect. This issue's been discussed at length earlier about this non-conforming use. And, and I heard early on, this is months ago, if you have an existing business, you're going to be out of business, you can't expand, you're frozen. But this language allows for existing non-conforming use to continue into perpetuity. It goes on forever. And there's an unlimited amount of transfer. I can sell a business 100 times. Each succeeding owner, if he doesn't abandon the business, of course, will be able to continue the same business. And Member Brandal brought out earlier, in the event of, it's good questions if there's a fire, and this is, these are issues that lenders ask, too. If you've got a lender, existing lender, new lender, they want to make sure that this business continues to operate as it is, and it can. The city offers a letter to the lender in support, and it can rebuild subject to any normal code, like Title 24 upgrades. If a business, again, is burnt down, earthquakes, riots, whatever, it can be, the footprint goes in the same identical place it was before. You don't have to move it onto the street. And basically, in essence, in essence, every change that'll occur will be a voluntary change. Nobody's going to put a gun to your head and say, you've got to change from a tattoo parlor to a massage parlor. You can continue the business. What this means essentially, in the end, is any changes are going to be market-driven, which means if this plan has been written and is well-executed and it performs, then 10 years from now, 20 years from now, you're going to see a different Fresno. And if it doesn't, it's going to take longer, but it's all market-driven, and that's the way it should be. Nobody's going to be forced to make decisions they don't want to make. And comments were made, too, about the whole CUP process, and how does it allow people the opportunity, because we're talking about by right, to review. And I've reviewed this with the mayor and with Jennifer Clark, and I've reviewed the tables, and it basically sets up a hierarchical setup, where if it's a routine, you're going to come in, you're going to put, again, 50 homes and so many acres, it's by right. If you're taking that same, I use my, in my district, Lueville and Chestnut, you're going to sit, go from single-family homes, you're going to put a high-density, multifamily complex, will automatically trigger a CUP. And Member Bain's district, if you have a industrial use coming in, and it's going to be a, there is many storage, it's by right, it's done. If you're going to put a chemical plant in, it's going to require a CUP, in which it should require a CUP. We've talked about expanding the noticing from 300 feet to 1,000 feet, which I fully concur. We're still trying to offer safeguards for consumers and other businesses in the review process, and trying to blend that with making this a much more business-friendly proposition. And we look at, you know, what does by right mean? Right now, in the City of Fresno, there is no by right development. I've been hearing this for seven years since I've been on the council. And under this, these current laws in our, our development code, any property within the city limits can be developed by right. Approximately 2/3 of the properties within the city sphere can be developed by right. And within two to three years, when the specific plans that were currently not completed or completed, the entire city and the entire sphere of Fresno will be by right. And that means that this city is going to be, going to be hopefully at the forefront, the forefront of business-friendly processing, timely, business-friendly developments. And it's not, people always think of developments of single-family homes, multi, development includes industrial. We're talking about people having the ability to bring in a plant that can maybe generate 100 or 200 jobs, that goes through an expedited process. If you're doing by right, you're not going through an entitlement process, a CUP process. It makes it immensely easier to go through the process. And in the end, you know, we're going back 53 years since the last update, 53 years. It's been said earlier, there's more non-conforming properties now than there were, there are going to be in the future. We're going to improve that. Is this perfect? It's not perfect. And people have brought out issues that have to be dealt with. Mr. Gordon talked about Sequa. I think those are legitimate issues that have to be addressed, but there's no other way to make a transition. There's nothing easy about what we're doing, but it's got to be done. And I think the, the review process included stakeholders and individuals. The BIA has endorsed the development code. And this goes back to six months ago, when there was 20 pages of opposition. And this is now, and that's how far we've gone. People like Don Pickett, John Brilford, who are well-known and well-respected industrial developers, have signed on. Granville Homes has been involved and reviewed and contributed to this process. And the end result is to make Fresno a better city, improve what we have out there. I was here from 2001 to 2006 on the Planning Commission, and I saw, I'm getting the notice over there from my colleague, it's only 8:59. I saw a lot of subdivisions going through. It was so bad that even guys like Lee Brand could develop homes. Everybody did it. And we did quality homes, though. But there were a lot of homes built, a lot of homes built that were not quality. And I would be ashamed that we need to raise our standards on single-family, multifamily, commercial, that that's part of how this development code implements. So it's not perfect, but I think it's a huge step forward. And although my colleagues have already voted in a motion for this, I'm going to, city attorney, do I need to remake the same motion I made earlier?
No, you don't.
Okay. So I've made a motion earlier to adopt the development code as presented, with all the amendments that have been reviewed so far and approved by the council. Is that the correct motion?
Is the motion to include all of the items listed on the agenda for this matter?
Yes, as well as those items approved and discussed tonight.
Right, as amended.
As amended. So that's my motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier, you wanted me to come back to you? You okay? All right. I don't have, I don't have any other council members punched up, and I'll make a couple of final remarks before we vote. You guys want to say something now? Okay.
Councilmember Soria.
So I echo some of the sentiments that was, that were shared by my counsel, my council colleague, Lee Brand, in regards, in regards of streamlining some of the process to making the City of Fresno more friendlier to business. But I also think that the development code really is a foundation to improving the quality of life for many residents throughout the city. I think that that's very important. I know that we also had a lot of input from community advocates, which I believe are also a very, and should be also commended for their work and their efforts in working with us and providing some suggestions and things that, where we could, and where we did actually improve with some additional amendments. And so I want to thank the administration for being open to those changes. And so, again, you know, not only is it, will it help make Fresno friendlier to business, but I think it, it really sets a foundation to improve the quality of life for residents. And so I want to thank those advocates that gave input and that came to as many meetings that, that we had in, in discussing this document. And I will be supportive today of the development code with the amendments.
Councilmember Brandal.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to try and be brief. Councilman Capriolio has his doubts. I want to start off with a lot of thank yous, like my colleague, Councilmember Soria did as well. It really starts with the mayor. I found the mayor very engaged on the development code and very open in, in ways I haven't seen before. I really appreciate your openness and willing to listen over and over and over again to concerns that people have had on this. And that wasn't a barb, by the way, Mayor. I really believe, I've, I've, I've never seen that, the level of commitment like I've seen in this, in this discussion. You've put- You've put up with countless, countless, countless meetings. I've been a part of a lot of them. And really, that extends to Bruce, too. And really, it's about a dozen people that I see around the table just working around the clock for the development code. Jennifer, you and your staff, Dan Zach, who's not here tonight, just doing, just burning the midnight oil for months on Edge. And then really, our city attorney, both Doug and Talia and others are constantly there as well. So I appreciate our staff. And then like, just like Councilmember Soria, I also appreciate the community groups that are all involved. The builders, the activists, the regular citizens that come down to express just one little tiny item that they feel impacts their life. And so it's been a great discussion and lots and lots of hard work. That's what I've noticed firsthand. And I've been a part of some of it, not all of it, but there's, around this building for months on end, people have been trying to get this right. It's been very honest, in my opinion, and there's been good compromises all the way around. I've seen the administration compromise over and over again when I thought they wouldn't. I thought that they had drawn a line in the sand, but somebody else asked a good question or made a good point, and I've seen them be flexible and make that change. I've also seen the other partners, you know, our builders, make, make changes and compromises. And, and so I really appreciate everybody's hard work. It's all very valuable to the process. During the process, I was close, most closely related to, or what I saw, the most interest and the impact and discussion about was residential building in the city of Fresno. I saw over and over again our residential builders coming forward with a list of demands, a list of comments, a list of critiques, and things that they thought could be done better. And then I would see the administration respond over and over again and talk through problems and come up with solutions. Really, I believe if the whole development code had have been tackled at the level of what our resident, of the scrutiny that our residential component was tackled, I would really reach a high level of satisfaction with, with the process. But there's other components that people did not come and talk about as much, and we did not have as much conversation. And I believe they're very integral to the success of our city. Some of those components are industrial, commercial, and multifamily. Now, the truth is, right at the last moment, we're going to have a continuation of the multifamily conversation. And so some other multifamily experts will be, will, will come in and continue that conversation. That's what Councilman Brand asked for in his opening amendment. But industrial and commercial, and, and people will tell you that are sitting up here with me that, well, council member, some of our industrial people, they've signed off on this. They love it, they like it, they've signed off on it. And same with commercial. But I didn't see the level of scrutiny that really helps me at the end of the day with the development code on a couple of these other areas. And I would really totally support this as a huge ongoing, if this, if this development code's going to last half the time of the last one, I would have, I would have had to have seen the same level of scrutiny for those other two items. Why? Because in commercial and industrial, in my opinion, and this goes back to conversations that I had and statements I made throughout the general plan process, I believe that, that that is where the groundwork's laid for economic success in the city of Fresno. And I'm not saying that we shied away from it in this development code debate, but it certainly wasn't scrutinized. How is Fresno preparing industrially and commercially for the future for unemployment? Folks, I want to see unemployment in the city of Fresno drop to five, five percent or lower. I want to see it come down dramatically. And I think we could, we should have used our plan a little more aggressive to make that happen, okay? So that's where I have some concerns, that I did not hear jobs and jobs discussed quite at the level that I think, I think we should have attached it to this planning. Now, pure planners, like Jennifer, that's not, maybe her, her job is not to oversee all of that. But for the rest of us, I think we should have got more involved in, in plans and the economic development behind our development code. So some of the concerns that I had in the general plan, and in my mind, the, the development code is the teeth to the general plan. So I had major concerns at the general plan, which I made public at that time. It was just about a year ago, and I voted no on the general plan. I've been engaged in a lot of discussions to make sure that the development code could go forth as well as possible. And some people would say that I was, am a hypocrite because I have advanced amendments, even tonight, which you heard about. So I have been engaged in the development code, but at the end of the day, I don't believe it, it, it doesn't, my gut instinct says that we still have work to do in most of these regards. And I might be wrong. I absolutely might be wrong. But I, in my opinion, I need to be proven wrong. For sure, I don't believe I was proven wrong through the, through the different arguments that we made during the general plan. So I would love to be proven wrong, and in five years from now, I'll still hopefully be here right at the end of my second term, if possible, if the citizens of District Two deem it so. And I will say that I was wrong if I was wrong tonight. I have no problem saying that. But my gut instinct says that this is still a lot of centralized planning. It's still a lot of government planning and projecting, a little bit less of the free market than I'm comfortable with. So I'm looking forward to be proven wrong, but those are my concerns. I made those same arguments when we talked about the general plan. I was told today that in 2015, for the first time, that the city of Clovis pulled more planning commits, permits, excuse me, than the city of Fresno. This kind of stuff terrifies me. Sacramento would love our plan tonight. Sacramento would love this type of centralized planning. This is what they want to see a major city in California look like. In my opinion, and others can disagree, Sacramento doesn't know what it's doing when it comes to business in the state of California, and I don't want to be a cookie cutter for that approach. So I would have hoped that Fresno would have gone a little bit different through this process. But all that said and done, I look forward to being proven wrong, and so I'm not going to be supporting the development code tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Thanks, Council President. I want to join in the comments made by all my colleagues on the gratitude to each and every level of this process and to reach the point we're at tonight. I was going to stop at that, but I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to repeat everything that was said by each one of my colleagues. So, y'all want to get a drink of water and go to the bathroom? So I'll try to finish before midnight. Now, no, seriously, I really appreciate all the hard work that went into this, and only good things can come from it. Life is full of unintended consequences. That's, but what's what makes life exciting, because we have to adjust and make arrangements to deal with it each and every day. So I think we're on the right track, and this is going to go a long way. And my final comment is I'd like to remind Council President that we were going to adjourn this meeting in loving memory and in honor of Mr. Bulldog Bob Duncan. Thank you.
Mayor Swerengen.
Thank, pardon me. Thank you, Council President Bainz and, and members of the city council and the public who remain faithful here tonight and may be watching at home. Just wanted to comment on the historically significant moment that we're experiencing tonight. And it's not the first. If you consider the major issues we've tackled over the last seven years, we have seen significant and positive change on behalf of the people of Fresno. I believe that Fresno is headed in a different and positive direction, and that this development code tonight is, is a major implementing tool to ensure that happens. I recall being involved in economic development for ten years before becoming mayor of Fresno. For some of those years, I worked on the Regional Jobs Initiative, and a significant committee of that initiative was focused on improving the planning and permitting process at the city of Fresno. And we engaged engineers and developers and others in the community who directly were customers of the city of Fresno. And I remember working with some consultants in the market at that time. They were complaining ad nauseam about all of the problems and working with the city of Fresno that we've all heard for, for many decades. And, and I remember hearing comments like, "We need more things to be developed by right. We need simple, clear guidelines," all of the sorts of things that we've captured in this development code. I even remember hearing, you know, "If you want to do infill and mixed-use development in downtown and along transit corridors, you have to have mixed-use zone districts." And I recall hearing from the planning director at the time that he attempted to write a mixed-use zoning ordinance and literally just couldn't figure out how to make that work. And yet here we sit tonight with mixed-use districts established, figured out, well-vetted, and, and, and ready to go to actually make the vision of the general plan come alive. So I just want to comment on the incredible work that our staff has done, all of us here who represent members of the public. We're sent here by the members of the public to oversee the work of the hired professional staff to provide direction and accountability. And I think it is extremely important to acknowledge their efforts tonight. This has been a five-year effort. And another comment I remember hearing when we were working on economic development and the Regional Jobs Initiative was, "This development code has got to be rewritten." And I remember asking Nick Jovino about it. "Why can't we get the development code rewritten?" He said, "You cannot do it. It is impossible. It can't be done. It's too old, it's too complicated. You know, we do patches here and there. We cannot take that thing apart and put it back together again." And that is exactly what our staff have accomplished. So it is important to recognize their efforts. Dan Zach is not here tonight. He has played a critical role over the last year. Arnaldo Rodriguez before him, who left us now and is in a different community. And of course, Jennifer Clark, who has spearheaded the whole team and the, the team from the advanced planning staff, who worked so hard last year to get the general plan completed and then spent the next year getting this development code written. So I want to, I want to really recognize them. And, you know, I, I certainly respect my colleague, Councilmember Brandow. I appreciate his involvement on some aspects of this, and I am so looking forward to that moment when you admit that you were wrong. So with that, thank you, Council President.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Looks like, I think that's it. So I'll, I'll make a couple of brief comments, but the, the truth of the matter is, every, everything that I could have possibly wanted to say has been said, and it's been said better than I would say it. So I just want to certainly highlight a couple of points, and I gotta, I can't have an evening like this, an evening of major historicity in the city of Fresno, historical significance, without saying thank you to, normally I would say thank you to the staff first, but I'm actually going to say thank you to the mayor first, because I do join with Councilmember Brandow and, and saw the, the level of detail that you went through in this document. And yeah, the, I don't, the public didn't, would, would never get a chance to see this and be a part of this, but the level of work you put in personally, the time and investment and your knowledge of the individual lines of this code is pretty damn impressive. And so I want to say thank you for serving, serving the city like this, because it was, that was yeoman's work that you did. And then, of course, I've got to echo the same sentiment to your staff. Listen, you know, last year this time, we were going through a general plan update, right? And, you know, ten days after we passed the general plan, you started working, picking up again on the development code and bringing that home. And the intensity of the work that you all have done over the last couple of years for the city is, is remarkable. And we, you know, us and this city owes you all a great gratitude, thanks for the work that you all do to, to bring this home. These are important documents. These are very historical. I know there aren't a lot of people here in the public right now, and maybe not that many people watching, but it's not lost on me how important this work is that, that you all are doing. So thank you. Thank you for sure. And, and of course, you know, it's always a thanks to the chief over there, the mechanic. It just doesn't happen without Bruce. So I know that your fingerprints are on everything that happens in the entire city. So, you know, it just doesn't work without you, Bruce, and got to say a special thank you to you as well. You keep, you keep it, you keep it all moving when it's all looking like, like it's unraveling. So I know, I know what you have to do just to keep everything together while it's chaos going on. So just wanted to say thank you to the staff, and I also want to thank my colleagues. I think all of you guys got pretty, pretty in-depth in this, and you all did, we did a lot of work collectively. So I just got to say that this isn't a perfect document, but nothing we do here is perfect. Like Councilmember Brand said, we, we try our best, we have the best intentions. The mayor and staff, I think, did an incredible job of trying to balance points of view. You know, there are certainly the protections in here and the effort to make the city more business-friendly, but I also think there was just as much sensitivity to our community and land use advocates to respect the needs and wishes of communities, too. I, I think it was, it's an incredibly tough thing to do, and not to say that we got it all a hundred percent right here, but I'll tell you what, it's a good effort. There's a lot of input from both sides, from all sides, and I think that a lot of what communities we're looking for and business communities we're looking for are represented in the pages of this document. And I certainly thank our land use advocates and our business community, too, for engaging, engaging in this process. It matters. It certainly matters. And so obviously, I'm going to be supportive of this tonight. I think that the things that we find out in the future that aren't perfect, we'll fix them, like we always do. Every time we, every time we adopt something and we, we realize a few months, a few years, a few decades later that, oh, wait, that was crazy. Why did, why did we do that? And some, some folks after us, or maybe even us, will change some of the things that we realize need to be changed in this code. But I view this as the foundation for how we are going to develop in this city, and we need a foundation. The foundation's important. There has to be a starting point, and we have to make, in my opinion, some type of statement of what our values are, what we believe as a city and how we're going to develop, and this does that. And I think that's important. So it will change over time, no doubt. I don't know if Councilmember Brandow will say, "You're wrong," because I think that there will be changes that come up, and you'll be like, "Aha, I knew it." Or, well, or you could say, "You're wrong." But, but I, I would say that I would view this through a different lens, and just, this is the foundational principle for how we develop in our community. And I think it's okay. And it's okay to make this, that statement. And over time, it will evolve slightly. It will be an ebb and flow, but hopefully this is a good starting off point. So with that, we have a motion by Councilmember Brand. I have seconded the, the adoption of the development code and all supporting documents and amendments. Are those in favor? You want to do electronic? All right, we've had a request for, for an electronic vote, so yes is to adopt the code and no is to... All right, the vote passes five to one with Councilmember Brandow voting no and Councilmember Quintero absent. Thank you, guys. And before, before we all leave, I want to make sure that we are adjourning tonight's meeting in the memory of the beloved Robert Duncan.